Are we back online, Steve?
We're back online. I resumed recording.
Okay, thank you. The board is back in open session now.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
After listening to arguments presented today and reviewing the proposed decision and other information provided to us, I don't believe it's the Board of Education's job to second guess a local Board of Education. We are to give deference to, or to give deference to, local decisions, I believe is a good thing. Their decision was not unreasonable in the circumstances. The appellants in this case have not rebutted the deferential reasonableness we give to the local board and therefore have not met their standard of proof. I would therefore move that we accept and affirm the proposed decision prepared by Thomas Mays, ALJ.
I have a second.
Motion's been made. And second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on. It's Chapter 14, School Health Service.
We need to get Thomas back in, so let me go.
Mr. President, members of the board. Rulemaking, executive order. There's an 11 o'clock meeting with all state agency rules coordinators that I have to attend, so I was wondering if, with some flexibility, these two rulemakings, I don't want to rush through them, I want to give them the opportunity, but is there agenda items that you could take out of order?
I have no objection unless one member has objection.
No objection.
Are you talking about?
Chapter 14 and then 64 and 67.
Just those two items?
Just those two items.
Okay. We will move those to later time in the agenda.
Thank you for your flexibility. Flexibility, that's the word of the month.
All right, we will hold those to later in the agenda. The next item is that Prairie Lakes Area Education Agency Professional Preparation Program. Do we have representatives?
Hi.
Hi, Kelly.
I'm Kelly Faga, and I do the Para-educator program within the department. And today I have Prairie Lakes here with me. I have Dr. Linda Ankeny, who is the License Renewal Coordinator at Prairie Lakes. And I also have Mrs. Carrie Gerwin with me, who's the License Renewal Specialist. They're seeking reapproval and for their generalist certificate, also they have the areas of concentration of early childhood and special needs. They have their five organizational standards, and they have met all of those, and I'll go through each of them and just kind of review a little bit about how they've met those standards. In the organizational and resource standard, they're committed to a work culture that promotes and supports best practices in education, professional development opportunities for certified paraeducators, so they offer classes towards renewal. They also have met the diversity standard. They have their candidates read a variety of different readings around diversity. They also have them discuss their experiences within the classroom with the, about their experiences working with children with different cultures and backgrounds, and they sign a lot of reflective assignments. They have also met the faculty standard, which they have a common curriculum that is developed by the AEAs and their instructors, and they offer this through online Moodle and face-to-face. They do have four instructors who individually teach the courses and collaborate as needed. They also have met the assessment and evaluation standard. They have participants that are, they assess their things, they assess through things like discussion, quizzes, journal reflections, in-class group work, interviews, observation, and collaboration. And they also have the students do a portfolio where they maintain their assignments, and then they do reflective journal. They also have state curriculum that they utilize, and they utilize Moodle, and that is aligned directly with their, each of their competencies. And then finally, in their clinical practice that they have also met, they collect and analyze candidate data and program data for program improvement. They have electronic end-of-the-course survey asking for feedback from the paraeducators, so the instructor can take that information and better the class. The survey data is analyzed to determine the improvements and, or the next steps. And so with that, I recommend that they, that the board recommends they have approval, and if you have questions, I'm glad to answer any process questions, and they're glad to answer any questions about their program.
Let's see that there were no compliance concerns at all?
No compliance concerns.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll approve. Call for motion's been moved by Brian to approve.
Second.
Second by Cassandra. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Opposition? Program's approved. Congratulations.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We have Keystone.
So the next one is Keystone AEA, and I believe we have Sarah Schiller, who is a social worker for Keystone on Zoom, and they are seeking reapproval for the generalist certificate in their area of concentration of early childhood. They too have met their five standards, the first one being organizational and their resource standard. Their resource, their resources to support the technology was apparent in their report, and the Keystone also collaborates with the LEA's technology directors to ensure that they all have Zoom accounts, working microphones or camera devices, and reliable Wi-Fi connections. They have also met the diversity standard. Keystone does gather data about diversity through their registration process on their candidates, and the committee reviews the data and utilizes it to determine future goals. They also utilize it to determine needs and future support for the current programming. They also have met the faculty standard. The paraeducator feedback surveys provide formative feedback for the instructors and school administrators, and mentor teachers also reflect with the staff at the time of the observation to discuss potential improvements to the program. And then the assessment and evaluation standard, each paraeducator's assessed for understanding, their understanding of the competencies, and they do expect them to have 80% overall to pass the coursework. And the paraeducators are also observed at Keystone by the AEA staff members to make sure that they are competent in all areas. And then in the clinical standard, all the paraeducators must be employed by the local discipline, something that's a little bit different than other agencies. They require them to be employed to make sure that they're getting all those experiences within their clinical, and they also keep a detailed log sheet that aligns with the competencies. And so with that, I would recommend full approval for Keystone AEA.
It's all moved.
Moved by Brian?
Second.
Second.
Second by Rod and Brooke.
Brooke can have it.
Any further discussion? And those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion's carried. Congratulations to Keystone.
Last one. The last one is the University of Iowa, and they're actually seeking approval for the first time, and Dr. Mark McDermott, Associate Dean of the Teacher Education and Student Services, I believe is on Zoom. They too have met the five standards, and in the first one, organizational resource standard. They have ongoing collaboration. They're a little bit bigger institution, so they have 11 departments at the University of Iowa that they collaborate with when they're coordinating their coursework. They also, the paraeducator program was also governed by and administered by the faculty and the teacher education program. So a lot of times when the universities are doing this, a lot of those pieces are in place already, and that helps with making sure that they meet the standards. And the diversity standard was met as well. They have some pretty extensive coursework that they offer, educational psychology and measurements, foundations of special education, which also catches those IEPs and the MTSS and RTIs, English Language Learners, all of that within that coursework, and then the orientation to elementary education as well. And they have also met the faculty standards. The instructors complete four clock hours of ongoing involvement with a teacher setting, which is one of the requirements. They do that, they're required for each year, and within Chapter 79, there's a requirement that they have 40 hours within five years. A lot of times faculty get beyond that, but they're meeting it here as well, and they are, and their faculty's all monitored through faculty evaluations. Their assessment and evaluation standard, the completers are surveyed following the completion of the teacher education program. It's called the novice teacher survey, and so they collect that data, and that data is, they work with the College of Education Director of Assessment on that data. They utilize that data and share it at monthly meetings and share it with their other stakeholders through advisory meetings to make sure that they're making appropriate program changes. And then finally, their clinical standard, they have multiple field experiences in authentic school settings with educational stakeholders. The students are observed and to make sure they're demonstrating a variety of skills and dispositions needed to align with the standards. So I would recommend full approval of the University of Iowa.
Any questions? Or Kelly?
Make the motion.
It's been moved by Rod for approval of the program.
Second.
Second by Brooke. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion's carried. Program is approved. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Horizon Science Academy, Des Moines Charter School applicant.
Good morning. My name is Eric Kites. I'm an administrative consultant with the School Improvement Bureau, actually, Bureau Chief, and this is Janet Boyd, and we're here to talk to you about the Horizon Science Academy. And Janet has taken the lead on the renewal, or excuse me, review of the application, and I'm going to turn it over to her.
I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go over the summary real quick, then read the recommendation, and then I will introduce the folks that are here from the charter. So you notice in our summary, the background basically is the code and rule. It talks about the November 1 deadline for submission of an application to open a charter school in the subsequent year. This application did come in before the deadline, and what we did is we then notified them that we had received their application, and we then proceeded with what code and rule requires us to do for the charter application. So in the application review, we have the code quotation there that tells what we are to do, and that is to evaluate the written application, have an in-person interview with the applicant, and have an opportunity for a public forum of the residents of the district in which the charter is going to exist. We had, we set up five readers from the Department of Ed. They were trained. They were given documentation to score the application, and all those things were taken care of. The training was conducted on November 9, and they were to have their evaluation of the application done by November 21, which they did. There is, of course, we do retain that documentation in the scoring sheet. Also, members of the Bureau of School Improvement conducted a virtual meeting with the applicants, and that was conducted on Tuesday, November 8, just to kind of go over what the procedures are, how this flows, you know, this meeting, and so on. Also, two staff members conducted an interview with the founding group, which is Dr. Chris Murphy, Suni Richter, and Roger Brooks. And so what I would say about was a little different in this particular cycle in that we let the, the questions that were asked of the founding group were kind of directed by some of the inquiries we had from the readers. So you included in your packet are the questions and the responses. So we did a little bit different, kind of let that process kind of inform those questions, and we also, when folks, when readers had, you know, kind of things that they wanted clarification, those were included in those questions. Those questions were also provided to the applicant prior to the interview. So then we also, I'm sorry, this is not in chronological order in which it occurred, but on the, on the back page there talks about the public forum. The public forum occurred on November 29 at 6:00 PM in Des Moines. It was in person. So I'm gonna read, read the recommendation that we are making. The Horizon Science Academy, Des Moines Charter School received a sum score across readers of greater than zero on each of the required components in Iowa Code 256E. The applicant responded affirmatively to all the assurances and conditions in the charter school application. The applicant did not request any waivers. The submitted calendar indicates a start date prior to the required August 23 date. The council advises the applicant is exempt from Iowa Code 279.10. It is recommended that the State Board approve the charter with or without conditions. The recommendation for approval with or without conditions is based on consultant scores/recommendations and the completion of the required elements in Iowa Code 256E. We list there some potential conditions, because you can approve with conditions, and those would be provide documentation to the Department of Education how and when requested, meet the Department of Education how and when requested, required meetings with student reporting and school business consultants, and any other items needed or requested by the Iowa State Board of Education. Then, of course, there was attached, there is the interview questions with their responses, and then the actual application is there. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce, I have Dr. Chris Murphy from Concept Charters. I have Suni Richter, one of the founding members. I have Kitty Nowar, one of the board, the.
Weston.
Weston Nowar. Sorry.
That's okay.
One of the governing board members. I believe that we have some folks on Zoom. I was told that Christine Hensley was possibly going to be on Zoom, and then Roger Brooks was going to join us on Zoom also. So I can't exactly see who was all on Zoom, so.
Christine is on Zoom.
Okay, okay. And she, if she needs to respond to any questions, then she should be able to do so. First, I guess that I would ask the board if you have specific questions about the application that you, you know, asked the founding group or the governing board. If you have any specific questions of me, I'd be glad to, to help with that. And I would also say that Eric and I do not read, we don't read the application per se and score it, and then also, I would also tell you that Eric and I have provided technical assistance. There was a great deal of technical assistance back and forth trying, working with the applicant.
Questions or discussion on this application?
When we approved charter schools in the past few months, did we, did you guys suggest any potential conditions with those? Like, like here?
And that's why we decided to just give you, as we go through this process, this is a new process for us, we thought, here's some potential things we could, we could add.
I'd like to encourage our discussion as opposed to, I mean, do you have an underlying reason for any of those that you might suggest to us would be appropriate?
Um, I think the big thing is to make sure that we have the appropriate communication between the department and the charter school, so that we're providing the proper oversight and ensuring that we're providing the proper communication and information to the State Board to ensure that you're able to make the decision. And Cassandra has a comment, too.
May I make a comment? There was a condition that was required at Hamburg Charter School, if you recall, when that was approved last year, and that was to submit a certificate of need to the SBRC, because they were intending to make infrastructure changes to the building, and the district itself didn't have the authority to spend the intended revenue saved dollars for the purpose of increasing the space to actually host the charter school there. And I think there were other specific applications related to actions, or specific conditions related to those, those things that they needed to do in order to be able to perform the functions that they were saying were going to do. In this case, I would say that the authority already exists for us to call any meetings, request any information, because the State Board and the department has the authority and responsibility to monitor the sustainability and effectiveness of those charter schools established pursuant to 256E. So whether or not those conditions are attached to the application, the State Board, the department still have the authority to do those things, if that helps. Thank you.
It does. That's what my understanding was. And the ones you referred to in Hamburg were brick and mortar and financial, if I recall?
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, the paraphrase is that the State Board already have those abilities without putting them as far as conditions?
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure I understood that correctly. I guess I have a question to start with. Have you identified potential properties as far as location?
Sure, I can address that. Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time. And before we really get started, I do want to commend the Department of Education as well as the State Board for this whole process. It's been extremely rewarding. I work with a nonprofit group that oversees 31 public charter schools across the Midwest, and we work with several authorizers across many different states here in the Midwest, and the process has been very transparent, very forthright, and we really appreciate Janet and Eric and everybody's support in this process. As it comes to locations, it's difficult in the charter world, to be fair, to take locations right away, only because there's no funding upfront to start a new school. And with the change in the code, there was one piece that's different historically. So the Hamburg School and the other schools, those are district-led models, and so there was already some startup capital and some facilities that were available to those locations. For us, with an independent governing board with Kitty Sitzan and Sunny and myself on the founding group, with Kitty being part of the board and Christine and other folks as well, they are looking into various options. We have one strong location we're considering. It's Franklin Junior High School. That's on the northwest quadrant of the city. We have had several visits and walk-throughs of the location. We're working with CVRE, a commercial real estate firm, to help identify spots. We've looked at close to two dozen different locations, and if I could say one thing about facilities, it's from, as a charter management group, it's really essential for us to find a space that's safe and secure, and finding a location that already exists that looks like a school, and smells like a school, and acts like a school, that just makes it easier to be move-in ready. And when you don't have the startup capital as a charter school, it's important that you can move in there in a fiscally responsible way. Otherwise, there are many different warehouses across the city that we've looked into, but they're just cost prohibitive. You'd have to purchase a space, and you'd be looking at $8 to $10 million to renovate a location, and it's just, it's just not something that we could do as a startup school. And so Franklin Junior High right now, to lease a portion of that facility is what our expectation is. We're looking at the second floor. We'll have our own secured entrance in the location. We'll have our exclusive rights to the second floor as well for all of our students to enter and to be safe, and we'll renovate that space to make sure that it's up to date and codes. We've had several meetings with different departments of the city already, so working with Mike Simonsen and Simonsen team, they've connected us with folks with the city of Des Moines. We've talked with electricity and buildings and grounds, and all the different committees that are out there and departments that have given a sort of initial thumbs up for us to continue looking at Franklin. So that is our primary location.
I'll follow up with another question if anyone else is jumping in. Talk us a little bit about teacher recruitment. Why are we never going to spread, attract teachers to be here?
So, teachers, I'm a former traditional public school teacher myself. I'm a former traditional principal outside of the Chicago area. My wife is an elementary school teacher in the traditional districts as well, and so teaching is really kind of near and dear to us, and all the folks that I work with at Concept Schools come from teaching backgrounds, and so finding high-quality teachers is absolutely essential to us. To recruit and to identify teachers here specifically within Des Moines, we will, as soon as the charter is approved, with or without conditions, we want to make sure that we do promote this as an opportunity for, for new teachers to try something new. As a charter school, you have an opportunity to start fresh with a brand-new school culture, to really drive STEM achievement, to drive college preparation as we age up within the communities. So we will be promoting these positions quite readily across different teacher websites. We'll be connecting with different universities and colleges within the state of Iowa to try and attract teachers here. Across our network, we have close to 1,600 to 1,700 full-time teachers across the whole network. We'll encourage some folks to try and attract to come into this space as well, but really, we're looking maybe about 12 to 14 full-time teachers, a couple of administrators, some admin assistants, and three to four classroom aides to support the staff. So it's not a major lift on the system here within Des Moines. It's not something that we're, we're not accustomed to hiring to right away to start off with. We're confident that our salary is competitive, where it is about $5,000 more than the year-one teacher salary for Des Moines Public Schools. We have a full insurance and benefits package, which we believe would be very attractive to teachers as well, as well as different retirement benefits as well. So we're confident that we will be able to fully staff this within the next several months.
Excuse me, do you have no startup cash as far as this school? I'm assuming your organization's going to be providing some funding?
It is. As a charter management organization, I think that that's, that's one of the things that the founding group and our governing board members realize, that without a group like Concept Schools, there's many groups like us as a charter management organization. We're a nonprofit group that provides comprehensive services to schools, and so we provide the academic services, the operational, all the management services that are, that are sort of the backend services for the school. And what comes with that is that sort of support, whether it's for teachers, for the academics, for startup capital to begin with. And so right away, as there is no money right now to start with, even for the governing board to finish its bylaws and go through the incorporation process, there are legal fees that are associated with that. And yes, of course, our organization, that startup capital. And yes, of course, our organization will provide that startup capital to the founding group at a zero-interest loan that will pay back over some time. It's, it's already put into the budget up to a certain number.
Can I add that this would be the first charter management organization in the state? This is the first application we have gotten.
Okay.
Can you expand a bit on the serving underserved populations, please?
Sure. So, Concept Schools has 31 schools across the Midwest. All of our schools are located in urban settings, whether it's the Twin Cities or St. Louis, Chicago. We've got schools outside the Detroit metro area, we're in Indianapolis, and most of our schools are in Ohio, in fact. So from Cleveland to Columbus, Youngstown, Cincinnati, towns and cities that look a lot like Des Moines. And what we are, we attract are historically underserved communities. We find that those schools have a traditional track record of, of being unsuccessful for many different reasons. Those communities oftentimes are of low-income families, they're oftentimes African-American families or Hispanic families. And we know that with our schools in particular, when we are in these historically underserved communities, our students achieve student achievements rates at 1.2 grade levels per year compared to one year in a traditional public school setting. So, we have a long history, a track record of being successful within these communities, and that's through what we believe a secret sauce, a combination of real positive, strong culture, that there's a partnership between our teachers and our administrators and our families and community members. It's really essential that we have a holistic approach to supporting student growth, whether it's behaviorally or academically. And we just know that we can be successful within those communities. We've done it in the past, and we believe that we can provide that opportunity here for the, the city of Des Moines.
Chris, if I can add on to that, please? So, I'm a Chicago native, and I moved here in 1983, so I've been in Des Moines for a long time. And so the school we visited up at an anecdote to respond to your question, is McKinley School. And if you're at all familiar with Chicago, it's in the near southwest side. So it's in a primarily an Hispanic neighborhood. And, and when we visited, it was spring, but there were kids who were in building robots with their, with their teacher. And this, and they were in a classroom, they were, the kids we met were all Hispanic. And so you really, in that, in that scenario, you had, to, to Chris's point, you really had representation from a relatively poor neighborhood and also a heavily minority neighborhood with, again, with good achievement. In the hallways and in the school above the lockers, they had all the pictures of the graduating seniors, and this is for the middle school kids, all the pictures of the graduating seniors, where they were going to college, and how many dollars were going with them. And so if I'm a middle school kid and I open up my locker, there's something I can aspire to right above it. So, so that, I just wanted to add a little reality to, to, to really what happens on the ground there. Thank you.
Sunny, I have a follow-up question for you, or any member of the board. Did you consider other options besides the charter school company that you decided to go with?
Well, we, you know, Roger and I are both business people, and we, we really got into this via a friend who is very involved with politics in Chicago and, and very engaged with, he had run the school board in Chicago for seven years. And so, so that's how we got engaged with Concept Schools, through, through a friend. We, we didn't go around interviewing other, knocking on doors of other charter schools, if that's your question. And we were never going to start anything from scratch, because, I mean, look at what you have to do to get, to just answer your questions, right? You know, what's the building? How are you recruiting students, et cetera? What's your curricula? So, but what we did is we did do due diligence. So, we did call the various, we did network with the various school boards with the, we networked with the person who would, in Chicago, we would, who you would be working with, at Concept Schools would, and, and the school board would be working with, and the person who keeps them accountable. And, and they gave them good grades, and, and in Chicago. So, we also checked with other people who knew of various charter schools and made sure that Concept was legitimate, did good work, had the results they say they have. And so, we did spend a fair amount of time this summer of just kind of doing our homework to make sure this was for real. And, and we were satisfied with that. And I also believe that there is room in Iowa for multiple models, and I hope this is the first one. But Concept Schools was, once the law changed, Concept Schools was really ready to jump in with resources, with money, with time, with help. I think without, without Chris and the other people we met, we wouldn't be here. And so, it has to be an organization that's ready to invest. And, and you know, you've got other large cities, you have Cedar Rapids, Davenport, you have other areas in Des Moines. So I hope, yeah, I hope there are other options too. So, so that's, I think that's probably answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does Concept Schools have a focus on, oh, sorry?
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm sorry. Yeah, can you speak to children with disabilities?
Uh, sure, yeah. Well, as a charter school by law, and just by best practice, any student is allowed to enroll in our school. It is a non-selected process. And so, as a tuition-free school, there is an open enrollment process where there will be, as soon as, early as next month, we will open up the enrollment window where any student, whether it's an ELL criteria or special education students, they will have equal access to enroll in the school. As soon as the grade levels fill up, which we've put into the application process, there would be an enrollment lottery if need be, there could be a waitlist if need be, and the only preferential treatment that any family could receive in terms of enrollment is if there's a sibling involved. And so if there's a third-grade student that wants to come, and maybe they decide later on, oh, we also want to have our kindergartner come in as well, we will try our best to make sure that those families need that, so that way the sibling can join. In terms of special education, we will have special education staff on hand. We will collaborate with the educational agencies that are available with us here in the city as well, to make sure that all students' needs are met.
I think I read, I think I read in your, in the application somewhere that if you have an overflow of students who want to come, that there's a lottery system that you put in place?
There would be, there would be a lottery system in place if there is that overflow.
Okay. Brooke, you had a question?
Yeah, so does Concept Schools have a focus on recruiting diverse teachers and administrators?
Yes, we, we actually have somebody that's at our, in our director level, that is responsible for director of diversity inclusion and as well as representation. This individual is somebody who does help to ensure that there is representation. We, we know just as well as anybody as educators, that it's really important that if our youth and our students are black and brown children, that they're looking at teachers and administrators that look and sound and feel like them, so that way they feel secure and as well as that they feel represented. So it is a very important piece for us. We want to make sure that there is diverse staff, because we expect a diverse student population and diverse training.
About what percentage, like in your schools, are, I mean, are the teachers and administrators, what, I guess what a percentage are they diverse? 50% or do you know?
I, I don't know offhand. Anecdotally, I can tell you that it would not be 50%. It would probably be a little less than 50%.
Are there certain things that, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I think that, you know, schools here in Iowa even in, you know, certain areas have had difficulty recruiting minority teachers and administrators. So, are there certain things that you think that you can do working with certain organizations? Or you think that, I mean, specifically, where you can, I mean, it's, I mean, I think it's just harder in a place like Iowa, maybe, I guess, I don't know?
That, that's fair. That's a good question. And, and this is where, being a part of a, a national, I think, different organizations that we are a participant of, I'm sorry, Kitty.
She's sorry.
Okay, sorry. So, there are a lot of different partnership groups that Concept Schools is, collaborates with. On a national scale, the National Alliance for Public Charter Schools is a group that organizes several different conferences and a lot of different groups that they do come to these organizations. And so we do have, and we have reached out to different groups that help kind of promote the school, to attract different staff members. And even as a, as a, as a governing board, there's a lot of appetite to not only have that, that high salary to start with and great and excellent benefits package, but also there's interest on the governing board level as well to increase, whether there, there can be relocation bonuses or retention bonuses, and trying to attract people that might not otherwise come to Des Moines. We want to bring in the best. Attracting high-quality teachers, and to quote one of our governing board members, is his number-one priority. He really believes, and I do too personally, having a high-quality teacher and having a high-quality administrator in front of our kids is absolutely essential, and we will do our best to make sure that we have that.
And will the teachers be required to live in Des Moines? Or is there like, I mean, will they, can they live anywhere? I mean, or, I mean, obviously, the surrounding area?
We would rely on whatever the school code would be. And so, same thing with licensure, all of our teachers will meet any of the state requirements for licensure as well as residency. We do not currently have a policy for residency in, in our, in our bylaws, I believe, or even our charter agreement. But when we collaborate with the department as we go forward, if that is one of those stipulations that is brought to us, then of course we would, we would adhere to that.
They have to, they have to have Iowa licensed, our boy licensed teachers.
Okay.
Is there a residency, Janet? I don't.
No, no, no.
I was just wondering if they would be required to live, like, in the community where they're actually, you know, I think, or not. I know a lot of teachers live, you know, outside the community. I know that, some schools have said that that's an issue where, you know, teachers are coming in from like Weston Moore, still wherever, and you know, so.
Yeah, when, you know, this has gone before the Supreme Court in terms of where people could live. We're going back to what, '72, I think it was. I would love for them to live in Des Moines. I am a retired teacher, vice principal, and principal, okay? I am not from Iowa. I came to Des Moines. I attended Drake, completed my undergraduate and graduate work. I've worked extensively in Des Moines. My husband and I chose to remain in the community, because this is the community that we serve. But, people choose to live in other places, all right? It would be wonderful if we could, especially where we have a large pocket of minority and underserved youth living, if staff would so, would do so. But, we cannot tell them that's where you have to live. I appreciate Chris stating the types of staff that we will be looking for. If I were 40 years younger, I would consider, but I'll be 75 in July, so. But, but we will be looking for staff members who believe in what we are doing. And they exist. And if we make contact with all those appropriate partners who are out there, and especially if we look at our universities, just here in Des Moines alone, colleges and universities, where we can talk about growing our own, that'll make a difference. You asked about the percentage in terms of minority educators that we would be able to bring on. I've been in Des Moines since 1966, okay? And people of color are not necessarily flocking, okay? Understand that. So, that's one of those questions you have to set aside. Now, that doesn't mean that Concept Schools cannot be doing something that would encourage minorities to make Des Moines a natural area their home.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Janet or Eric, did I hear you correctly that the only exemption they're looking at from meeting state standards is a school starting date?
Yes. That's correct.
It was, I would review. Go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, could you speak to security? I mean, we're concerned about security in all our school districts in Iowa, and you're a little bit different, obviously. So, how do you deal with security issues? I mean, how, how do we know our kids are going to be safe?
Yeah, security is absolutely essential in, in, in any school setting. Again, we're, our families in Des Moines or wherever, or at Cincinnati, or Youngstown, or Cleveland, families entrust us, our school, babies. It's their, it's their number-one prized asset, to take their children, and it's our responsibility to make sure that we can provide a safe and secure learning environment for them to be challenged. So specifically, when we're looking at locations, it's just that, we're, we're looking at how can we make a school space? How can we make a facility be conducive to learning, but also be a safe location? And so specifically with Franklin, that was the one thing that we're looking at. So because it's a school that's already in very good condition, classrooms are already designed, nobody has to build any walls, there are lockers, the gym has great access to it. And so in a facility like that, the security measures are things like setting up security doors and blocking off doors and closing off entrances to make sure that the egresses are safe and secure for one-way access, for fire access. But in terms of entering the building, at Franklin specifically, there will be one primary location where students will, and family members can come in, they'll get buzzed in. We're going to install and create a main office right by that entrance area, so people cannot just walk into the school and walk into the classroom. That, that is in our design. It's something we've connected with our local architects, and that is in the plans moving forward. Whether it's Franklin or any other facility, we always make sure that there is that level of security there. We also have measures of sign-ins. Sorry?
No, go ahead, I'm sorry. I thought you were, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So, there, there are other technological systems. And so if you're a parent in a traditional public school or wherever, and if you go to your kid's school, you probably have to sign in, you maybe get a badge, and all of those same sort of technologies are in place with our schools as well, to make sure that anybody who's not a certified staff member or somebody that is supposed to be there, they're accounted for through the main office. We keep track of those individuals and we make sure that there are, there are a lot of them.
Thank you.
Do you have one, Brian?
Uh, I, I was just, it was on December 9th that you had this charter school interview, and one of the questions was about grassroots interest in this particular charter school. And, you know, I hope you have the problem with enrollment and need a lottery, but what about the other end? What's the, is there contingency if enrollment doesn't meet your initial expectations? And then, you know, it kind of combines with your charter school's plan for recruiting, enrolling, et cetera.
Yeah, so we, we are going to be working with the local marketing firm to help out with some strategic plans, to make sure that we help to raise the brand awareness of the school and, and to really help folks understand that this is a, this is a high-quality public school option that is tuition-free. And that's really the important part, is to make sure that we tell that story, that there are students that are across our, our state of Iowa right now, where the, if we consider the students that qualify as low-income, the eighth-grade students, less than 20% of the eighth-grade students that are low-income are actually meeting standards in reading and mathematics. And so if we continuously talk about how change needs to happen, so we can continue to promote the idea of, here is a new option, starting young, starting with the kindergarten through third-grade class, this is a safe and secure space that's focused on STEM education, that's focused on college preparation as we age and grow up. Our students are completely successful as they move forward. 100, nearly 100% of our students are graduating and are being accepted to four-year colleges and universities. They're going to some of the top schools in the nation. We have students going to Harvard, we have students going to Cornell and, and Wash U. We have some going to Iowa State right now in Grinnell, in fact. And so, we have some students in our schools that are going to some of the top, top universities as well as some of the best colleges in the country.
Thank you. Eric, you have?
Yes, one additional comment to the calendar question, is the initial application that was submitted had a start date prior to August 23rd. That was something that we'd bring up in the questions with the founding group, and did confirm it with, with Thomas Mays, that they could start at, prior to that date. And he said, yes, they could. But you'll notice in the application, they did submit a draft of a start date, and the start date that they're proposing now looks at August 29th. And we also have, you'll notice there's a, one discrepancy there, where October 12th and 13th are circled on the calendar as PD days, that's a, or excuse me, as parent-teacher conference days, that's a Thursday, Friday, but the list does say that it's October 13th and 14th, which is a Friday, Saturday. That's something that the local district could do parent-teacher conferences on a Friday, Saturday if they wanted to. So, what we're trying to do is, is make sure that we're looking at them as we would any other application. So, did want to bring up those, those calendar questions.
I'll add on to that just for a second or two. So, when it comes down to the school calendar, this, this is where, as an organization like mine with Concept Schools, we really rely on you folks at the department as well as the state board to be our partner in this process. There, there are things that we just don't know. And so when you say the Iowa State Fair is the most essential thing in the state of Iowa, I'm from Chicago, I don't know that, right? And so the, the idea about that early start date, the essence of it is really just to have an extended school year. And so our program includes an extended school year and an extended school day, so we have double English classes, we have double math classes built into the calendar. So if it's a matter of just moving the calendar one way or the other, the purpose is just to make sure that it's a longer year, a school year for the traditional kiddos. And so if it's, if it means we move before the, the, the fair... And so if it's, if it means we move before the fair, sure, of course, and that's that level of partnership that we're starting to see here with the state.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing now, we're taking motion.
I move that way, approve Horizon Charter School.
I move to approve the charter, with or without conditions, for Horizon Science Academy. Is there a second?
I have a question, when you say with or without, that doesn't give, tell them what the condition, I mean, should we say without? I will second it, if you would accept the amendment, your motion to be without conditions.
All right. I move that way, approve Horizon Science Academy Charter School without conditions.
Okay, it's been moved in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Approved.
There you go.
Chris has a call now.
Thank you.
You.
Just as a reminder, then, since this application was approved, we'll have to have another meeting, so there will be a board meeting on February 9th. It's 30 days, because we have to, yes.
We have to perform in person, so a majority of members in person, that would be to approve the contract, it has to be done within 30 days, I believe.
The board president will need to sign as long as, with, as with the founding group possible.
The contract has to be approved by the board, yes, that's why we will hold a meeting in February.
Okay. So your application is approved, and we have to approve the contract.
Thank you.
Okay. Eric, did you have something?
Nope, I was just going to introduce, we're going to reiterate for the next item.
Yes, our Teacher of the Year.
So Marietta will be introducing our Teacher of the Year, she's our Teacher of the Year coordinator. So we'll give it to Marietta.
I'm Marietta Rags, I'm a consultant in the School Improvement Bureau of Education, and in my other duties as assigned, I get to coordinate the Teacher of the Year program, which is absolutely one of the brightest spots in some of the things, the work that we do. I, you can head and have a seat here. I gave you a little bit of background information in your packet about the Teacher of the Year program in Iowa. Although we have gobs of award-winning teachers in this state, this is the only award program that's recognized and supported by the state legislature, and I think that's pretty important. And I'm confident when you got up this morning, you didn't realize that you were going to be sitting in the presence of one of the greatest teachers in the world. Now note, I didn't say the smartest, or the tallest, or the fastest, I said the greatest, and if you follow my line of thinking, you know, the United States ranks pretty highly around the world in our educational systems, and I think we should all be pretty proud of that, and Iowa's doing a really nice job of ranking up there at the top in the United States. Our 23, 2023 Teacher of the Year works in Mitchellville Elementary School, which is impressive, because we don't have that many elementary teachers, that's the Teacher of the Year, in the Southeast Polk School District, which ranks among some of the highest school districts here in the state of Iowa. So that makes her one of the greatest teachers in the world.
Okay.
She goes, they, our Teachers of the Year go through a pretty rigorous selection process, we, we, they have to be nominated, cannot be self-nominated, can't be nominated by a family member. Her principal nominated her, that's how great he thinks he is, or she is. A year ago, I talked with him, and they were already making arrangements for her replacement because they were that confident that she was going to win, and she did. So you get nominated by someone, an internal team of readers here reads every application. Last year, we had 67 teachers nominated for the Teacher of the Year, which is a low number for what we have had in the past. Of those 67, once you've been read and you approve all of the little pieces, then you have to decide whether you're going to apply or not, and Crystal was among the 20 that applied to be the Teacher of the Year. And then we bring in a group of educational leaders from around the state, like all of the big educational organizations are represented. She submits a very extensive application, lots and lots of writing and reflection on her practice. We read that, we pick the top five, and we bring them in for an interview, and more or less nerve-wracking than this day, I don't know.
About the same. About the same.
And we interview those top five, and that group makes the selection of who that's going to be. So again, I mean, think about all of the things that have to fall into place for me to say, Crystal Colbert is one of the greatest teachers in the world. So I'd like to introduce you to Crystal, and hear from her message today.
Congratulations.
Well, good afternoon, as Marietta said, I am Crystal Colbert, the 2023 Iowa Teacher of the Year. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to meet with you and speak with you today. I'm honored and humbled to be here, representing the passionate, dedicated, selfless teachers in the state of Iowa. I take great pride in this role, and I will work to maintain the legacy established by prior teachers of the year. I would like to thank you, Dr. Levo, and the entire State Board of Education, for the time, effort, and commitment you put into ensuring that our students are provided with a world-class education. Thank you for your leadership and your vision in this field. I look forward to developing a meaningful dialogue that will positively impact education in the state of Iowa. I'm here today to share with you some of my educational beliefs and passions, and how these beliefs will help support and enrich both teachers and students in the state of Iowa. But first, I would like to share with you my why for becoming a teacher, and one way that I like to connect with my students every day is to tell them a story. I think it's a great way to make connections and to build relationships, so in order to do that with you today, I would like to tell you a story about a little girl named Crystal. My why for becoming a teacher began when I was five years old. At age five, I am an incredibly shy little girl with no confidence and absolutely no friends. Instead of embracing the world around me like most five-year-olds do, I am timid and scared of almost everything in it. I always had the constant worry in the pit of my stomach. As a five-year-old, I did not know my letters or my numbers, I didn't know how to write my name. As I entered kindergarten, I would need intense, intense speech therapy starting almost immediately, and I would soon be put on several learning goals in many academic areas. I was definitely the little girl who hoped that she could sit in the back of the classroom and never be noticed. I grew up on what you would consider back then, the wrong side of the tracks, and because of that, there was a stigma attached to me. My parents loved me deeply, but they were just trying to focus on meeting the demands of daily life. But then, I went off to kindergarten, and my life was changed forever. My why begins the moment I entered kindergarten. I remember walking into my very first classroom and feeling so much love and warmth radiating off of my teacher, Mrs. Anderson. She was the kind of teacher who would hold your hand, dry your tears, pick you up when you fell down. She made everyone feel included, and throughout kindergarten, I grew to learn how to trust her, which was not an easy thing for me to do with adults at that time. From Mrs. Anderson, I learned the importance of love and kindness, patience, and trust. She was exactly who five-year-old me needed her to be. Fast forward a few years, and now I'm in third grade. Because of the love and dedication of my primary school teachers thus far, I'm no longer a little girl scared of the world around me. I'm still a little shy and timid, but I have found a peace and a comfort in this world that I did not know existed. This little girl who entered school far below her peers academically, had been exited from all of her academic and speech services. I cannot wait to get my hands on the next book to read, or the next math problem to solve. Mrs. Leach was my third-grade teacher, and she taught me the power of knowledge. She showed me that a story can take me to faraway places, and that working hard in school was always worth the effort. She helped to build my confidence, and she showed me that it was important to love myself just the way I was. Mrs. Leach was exactly who eight-year-old me needed her to be. Fast forward some more years, and now I'm in middle school. I'm a little quirky, what 13-year-old isn't, but I am confident, and I have an excitement for the world around me. During my middle school years, I discovered a love of running, fostered by two of my middle school teachers, Mr. Rath and Mr. Hayden. They showed me that pushing myself beyond my boundaries in order to achieve great things was always worth the effort. They were exactly who middle-school me needed them to be. And finally, our story leads us to my senior year in high school. I feel like I'm ready to take on the world. During this year, Mr. Long taught me that I was my only limit. He reminded me over and over again that it did not matter how my journey had started, but rather how I chose to finish it. He taught me to pursue what sets my soul on fire, and so I did. I was the first one in three generations in my family to go to college. I went to Iowa State on an academic scholarship and graduated with honors. I did the one thing that made the absolute most sense to me in the entire world, I became a teacher. And now, as I enter my 16th season of teaching, here I am today. I hope that when you look at me, you see the story of how I got here. Through the support, and the love, and the kindness, and the guidance of many teachers in my life, you see a little girl who overcame stigmas, found her confidence, sought after knowledge, and appreciated all of life's little lessons along the way. You see a little girl who found the most precious gift of all, the love and the care of a teacher, the gift that quite literally changed my life forever. And every day, I try to pass that gift on to my students. As my own personal story shows, I am the product of teachers and a school system who cared about me and my well-being. If it can happen for me, it can happen for every single child. My passion for children and helping them reach their fullest potential is one of my greatest contributions to this profession. I believe that all students are capable of growth and can learn at high levels, no matter their abilities, through positive self-affirmations and developing a growth mindset. My students know that I believe in them, and more importantly, they learn how to believe in themselves, and they know that they can do hard things. I truly believe in the phrase, relationships before rigor. When my students feel loved, valued, and accepted, the sky is their only limit. As I move into my sabbatical year, there are several areas I would like to focus my work on. First, I would like to focus on teacher recruitment. Together, we need to send a message that teaching is an important and noble profession. It requires not only the finesse of crafting lessons that are engaging and applicable to a child's life, but also requires the knowledge of understanding how children learn best. Teaching is both an art and a science, and we need the best, brightest, hardest-working individuals to enter this field. We need to reshape the current perception of education and let students know that, in fact, this is an amazing and very rewarding career. I would also like to spend this next year focusing on how to retain current teachers who have dedicated their lives to education. Teachers, unfortunately, in Iowa are leaving our field at an alarming rate, but I do not think it's because they want to. In talking with other teachers, most feel that the current demands on teachers just are no longer sustainable. Teacher burnout is a real and recognizable crisis, but I strongly feel that it is one that can be reconciled. Creating positive and supportive school cultures, planning intentional and meaningful professional development for teachers, implementing strong mentoring programs, and making sure teachers feel valued are important next steps to retaining teachers. Again, thank you so much for inviting me here today. I'm excited to begin my work as an ambassador of education in the state of Iowa. I look forward to working with you, Dr. Levo, and other state leaders. I'm excited to learn from educators across the state and grow professionally as I share my passion, my energy, and my enthusiasm for teaching. Thank you.
Assuming we have lunch, and we have Crystal.
Yes.
For lunch and have further discussion?
Absolutely.
I would be honored, thank you.
Okay. We have a 30, 30-minute lunch? 30-minute lunch scheduled, so we will adjourn and come back around 12:30.
Our report's going to be in, that's after lunch?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
We can, is board reports, so, Sandra, let's start with you, you have anything to share?
The Community College Council met yesterday, we've had several items that we discussed on our agenda. I know that there's going to be several reports that come up through the conversation the rest of the afternoon, but I do want to share with the Board of Education, they, the community colleges are hosting for the first time ever, a convention this fall, so if you want to reserve on your calendar, November 28th through the 30th, here in Des Moines, the Community Colleges for Iowa will be hosting the Community College Convention, so it will be the first time that they actually bring together an opportunity for folks in all roles in the community colleges to actually have an opportunity for learning and convening, so not the members of the boards, but the trustees, the faculty, just open to everyone, so I think that will be a really great opportunity. So I think that's the main thing.
Thank you. Ryan, met with the Vloggo Superintendent, met, talked about some concerns and thoughts on upcoming legislation, and some things that are going on locally, with the local school boards, reorganization meeting, they've got a long-term member who is going to be retiring next year, so she advocated the presidency, and so they've got a new president, and things seem to be going well. But we had really nice talk, they've got some plans to do some expansions of buildings, and so they're working on it, but other than that, that's my report. Thank you, Ryan. Brian?
Well, with the holiday and the end of the year and my other life, all I really had was some athletic director-type people contacting me about something on our agenda later today.
So I haven't seen you guys since September, was the last time I was with you guys, so I've had a lot go on since then, so the first thing that kind of went on was the NASB, National Association, National Associations of State Boards of Education, I believe is the full title, sometimes I mix up, you know, anyway, so I was in that with different student members from around the country, or student state boards members, so it was fun getting to know them, and then Cassandra hopped on a couple times, and we had our mentors come in and kind of help us with our project that we were working on, that we are still working on to this day, and it will happen, I know it, we just, might be squeak plus the deadline, but nothing wrong with that. I was asked to be a guest speaker in a podcast in January for, oh, some department in Iowa Education, I can't think of what it was now, but I did that Tuesday, after, during school, but during my prep period, or study hall, so they asked me kind of some questions about my role and what I did, how I applied, kind of the essay and what I wrote about in the essay. Something interesting, they asked if I could, like, have one class in high school, what would it be, and I was like, tax preparation, and they just, they didn't believe that I was serious about that. I don't want to commit tax frauds, like, what receipts do I need? And they would just laugh at me, I'm serious, I would like to have a tax class, so, you know, that's kind of a funny point. We just got a- We just got a new, our superintendent of around 25, 30 years has retired. So they're going in the transition now. Our principal became our superintendent. And then our tech guy, who used to be our principal, came as the interim principal for the rest of the semester. So it's kind of interesting to see how their transition of powers kind of shifted and the new roles that everybody's taking on. So that's mine.
Thank you. Brooke?
I don't really have any updates for the, or I guess, Des Moines Public Schools. So my son is in Greenwood Elementary, and they just have cyber. So schools were out for Tuesdays. Yeah, for two days, Tuesday and Wednesday. So I'm happy to hear that. The department has resources to help school districts through that. I know that, I can't even imagine what that feels like trying to. I'm appreciative that they were able to get up and running, even though with limited resources. Within two days, I know that the teachers had to come in, I think, on Wednesday, and kind of redo lesson plans and figure out what they were going to do since they would have like limited resources and internet and stuff. So I appreciate that a lot, so.
Mike, you have any for us? Hello, Mike?
He's muted. You're muted, Mike.
We will come back to him, hopefully. The only thing I have to report, yeah, it was Christmas and New Year's and everything else, is that I did visit with at least six administrators of Upkam and Gindai. Interesting to take on their perspective of things, so. That's what I have, so.
John, I did get unmuted. So again, I really don't have a report for you, just to say that it's warmer here than there.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, Mike, it's about 70 degrees in this room.
Yeah, go back.
And the lights are on, so we have bright lights.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the New School Business Official Program. Cassandra's going to lead this.
Good afternoon, I'm Cassandra Klein. I am the Bureau Chief for the Bureau of School Business Operations at the department. I'm going to give an overview of the application, the department's involvement in the process, and then I will turn it over to Sarah Miders, who is the President of IASBO, to provide a presentation. So if you know, or as you probably know, an employee that is responsible for the financial operations of a school district is required to hold an SBO authorization as authorized by the Board of Educational Examiners. The request before you today is to add an SBO Authorization Approval Program to the state of Iowa. There is currently only one in the state, and this would add a second. IASBO is the State Association for School Business Officials. So it is their professional counterpart, professional, professional development organization. They are the state's chapter of the national organization whose standards for school business officials was actually used when the original Iowa's School Business Official Authorization Program was created. The description of this proposed program from IASBO is to create what's called the institute to actually offer the authorization program. The department reviewed this application with a group of, excuse me, application reviewers. This mask is a lot hotter than I intended when I talk. High quality. There were four reviewers, and you see the qualifications of the reviewers and why they were specifically chosen to actually be a part of this review process. Each department staff member on this team reviewed the application for all of the required standards within the program. The department recommends the State Board grant approval to IASBO to provide an SBO Authorization Program beginning July 1, 2023, for a period of seven years. Do you have any questions for me before I turn it over to IASBO to make a presentation to the board?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Cassandra. I'm happy to set a noise you are. Good morning, and thank you so much for allowing us to present our application to you today. I'm Sarah Miders. I'm with SBO, School Business Official at four city community school districts in northern Iowa. I'm also IASBO's, the Iowa Association of School Business Officials. You'll hear us say IASBO throughout our presentation because it's much shorter. I am IASBO's current president. I'm going to turn it over to the rest of my group here to introduce themselves. I'll start with Mary Beth. I'm Mary Beth Bast. I'm the Executive Director for the Iowa Association of School Business Officials.
I'm Chris Smith, and I'm from South Winnessia Community School District. I've been there about 10 years, and I'm the president-elect of IASBO.
I'm Brian Givels. I'm the past president of IASBO. I worked for the Harlan Community School District as a finance director, and I've been there for 13 years. And thank you for allowing us to present today.
As you know, our goal is to be established as the Iowa School Business Institute to provide the initial authorization program to SBO School Business Official candidates. Our curriculum follows the standards and criteria for school business officials in Iowa so new SBOs can meet the requirements to be certified by the Board of Educational Examiners. Pending approval, pending approval, we will start the process to hire the Iowa School Business Institute Coordinator as soon as possible so they can become familiar with our plan and our vision. Our desire is to have this person in place well before July 1st. The Iowa School Business Institute Coordinator will begin to implement the plan we have shared with you to ensure we are able to provide our members and our new SBOs with the best educational experience possible. If you're following along on our prepared slides, we would now like to move forward to Slide 9 to further explain why we're passionate about supporting our school business officials.
If I were a member on the State Board of Education, I probably would be wondering why IASBO wants to do this. And so I'm going to address that. To answer this question, I think you need to know what it is that the Iowa Association of School Business provides, business officials have provided to its members. As you can see, response, knowledge, and support best tells our reasoning for this request. As the new Executive Director for IASBO, I took this position in July. I've been able to see the important role that IASBO plays in Iowa school districts with school business official shortages, increased compliance and auditing requirements with federal and state law, and protection of the resources that school districts have to provide for their students. I have experienced firsthand the way IASBO responds, knows, and supports its members. Iowa public schools for 30 years in districts ranging from 700 students to 4,000 students. I was a part of the original committee that developed the School Business Management Academy back in 1992, and I'm a product of that academy. And before mentoring was even a formal process, I received guidance from a kind soul in a neighboring district as I started my career. Later, I went on to be a mentor, and I could speak to the big role that that plays with our new SBOs. So you can see, I am a product of IASBO's response to needs, knowledge that it is provided, and support is given. And I'm confident that IASBO can provide a great institute and mentoring program to its members.
In 2013, I was one of the first academy initial SBO Authorization Program candidates. It took place after the July 1, 2012 legislation requiring that all school business officials be certified from the Board of Education Examiners. And I am very thankful for that education. I gained the valuable knowledge to be able to do my job well and to support the students, the administrators, and the school board in my district. I am passionate about continued education and mentoring. Using the structured governance of the initial authorization program, we can assure that school business official candidates are prepared for their position within their district. IASBO can provide the foundation, the financial resources, materials, services, and equipment to deliver a quality program. We want to offer a program that is flexible. For example, I have been firsthand witness to the current program restrictions that allow almost no flexibility. The SBO I was mentoring was on her second week of maternity leave and was required to attend her initial authorization program session in person. Her mother had to accompany her to Ames and watch her baby as she ended her class. It was only during her break sessions that she came out to nurse her child. It's for reasons like this that a learning management system can help enhance opportunities for school business official candidates in their initial authorization program. Mentoring is a key component of assisting our new SBOs along their educational journey. I have mentored three new SBOs, and the feedback that I received from the candidate, their superintendent, and their board members confirmed the importance of a good mentoring program. A comprehensive evaluation system is incorporated into our program designed to enhance teaching and learning opportunities. This is how we can respond to our members' need and structure quality educational programs.
When the Iowa School Business Management Academy was created in 1992, IASBO was not a mature enough organization, either membership-wise or financially, at that time, to support their own initial authorization program. Our organization has matured and now has the stability to offer that initial authorization program. Iowa code requirements were put into place in 2012 that all new SBOs must go through an initial authorization program. When this change occurred in 2012, IASBO members gave extensive input to the Iowa Department of Education to develop these professional standards. The IASBO Board may be more supportive in their services to their members by offering their own initial authorization program. That is the reason, in August of '22, the IASBO Board voted unanimously to pursue the Iowa School Business Institute Accreditation Approval. IASBO has strong relationships with the school administrators of Iowa, Iowa Association of School Board, the Department of Ed, and the State Auditor's Office, and always has been part of the process in the past.
IASBO currently hosts two educational conferences each year, one in the spring and one in the fall. We are very accustomed to planning educational content and hosting these type of instructional events. Required credits for the initial authorization program are currently being offered at our conferences for new SBOs, and it will be a very easy transition for our institute to continue this process. IASBO also has a number of corporate partners that are vital to our members' professional development. They support and often teach for our conference breakout sessions and even some of the current academy content. One of the biggest concerns shared to me by other SBOs having gone through the program is that they are pulled away from their desks very often. And as Chris stated, learning has to be more diverse to fit the needs of our members. For some, traveling three to four hours for a three-hour meeting is just not realistic, nor is it productive for a new SBO who is already struggling to complete the list of tasks they have been given. In addition to implementing a learning management system for flexible learning opportunities, we are focusing on offering more local face-to-face meetings. IASBO members are divided among 11 different regions. Each region hosts regular meetings, which are attended by all members, including new SBOs. Our goals are to expand these local opportunities for face-to-face learning and adapt our new SBO credits so that while still learning face-to-face, our new SBOs aren't pulled away from their offices and families as often. I'd like to also explain how much we currently support the Iowa State University Academy. Taking on the additional tasks currently being offered by ISU really isn't overwhelming. Our membership provides a majority of the content and teaching that is currently under Iowa State University's management, but not directly taught by many of their staff. Our members are the teachers and the content developers. On top of that, IASBO is directly responsible for 40 of the 135 credits. As you can see here, we plan and we organize, we rent the facilities, we develop the content, and we present all of these 40 items, including boot camp, orientation, critical dates training, and many sessions at our conferences. The current academy coordinates 93 credits of the 135. However, IASBO members and corporate partners assist in developing a majority of the credits they manage. With the institute budget, the main point that I want to emphasize is that IASBO is in a financial position to start the institute. Our organization utilizes financial analytics to help guide decisions, and we project out over a five-year period. We ask the same questions that your local school districts ask when budgeting. Where have we been? Where are we now? And where are we going? And our goal is to be cost-neutral. Year one of the institute budget shows a conservative estimate of students because we know we are in a transitional state from year one to year two. The slide from year-two projections, as you can see, shows more students included in this program. And the reason for that is because that we feel that we are able to draw our members to our program based on our familiarity with our program.
You know, one thing that's not on our slides, I think it's really important to mention, is our board's goal is really of improving the members' learning experience and the quality of the professional development. It was really one of the driving forces behind the decision to move forward with the endeavor. And so at this point, what questions do you have for the group here?
Ask a question. So authorization beginning July 1st. What would be your first event if you were approved?
Typically, the current academy is held in early spring, so it would have just concluded probably in March or April. So they're just graduating from their current year one and year two. So the first event would be critical dates training, which is online, monthly, provided by our board members, along with, they do, what are the words? The quarterly webinars that they host. The, thank you, universal, the UAP chapters. So those webinars would be the first events that would be held. And then we will have a fall conference in October.
Yeah, it's a little popular here.
And we would offer credits at that tax conference.
Mike, we're getting some feedback from you. Would you mind muting yourself while you're not speaking, please?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Thank you.
What else can we help you answer today?
Board members have any questions?
I would like to thank those that have helped us along our way. This has been a very long process. We've been working on this, our group, just the four of us, along with many supportive persons, including Dr. Klein and Dave Wempin from the BOEE, Jan Meller-Hoof, from Iowa Association of School Boards, Dana Shone, School Administrators of Iowa. We also have members that have been involved in our success here today. Kurt Subra from Heartland AA, Ed Schabell from Pleasant, Paul Boebek from West Des Moines. And I can't forget to mention that Nancy Bowe, our former director, who is, Mary Beth has replaced, has been very instrumental in all of this on a daily basis and probably one of the biggest supporters. So thank you to Nancy as well.
Any questions from board members?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the recommendation to grant approval for the IASBO SBO Authorization Program.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
My Brian, second. My Brooke, any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion to approve, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We've got the charter school monitoring update.
That's also Cassandra, so we'll give her a minute.
That's also Cassandra.
That's my home.
No, I thought the trigger chair.
The what chair? The trigger chair.
Trigger chair. Sometimes these chairs.
Oh, I hate that one. I feel like I'm gonna fall back.
Fall off your chair.
Oh, yeah.
Janet and I last presented to the State Board in November to provide an update on the two new charter schools that begin operating this year, Choice Charter School and Hamburg's Charter High School. As you recall, the State Board and the department have a responsibility to monitor the sustainability and the effectiveness of the charter schools pursuant to Iowa Code Section 256E. As new charter schools, we are working to be proactive in this monitoring process. Since the November meeting, the department team has met with both charter schools and received additional feedback and documentation from each charter school. Our goals of our inquiries and our report to you remain the same, and that is to monitor the sustainability and effectiveness of the charter school, to verify implementation of the statutory requirements, and to keep those lines of communication open with each of the charter schools to ensure that the department is a partner in their success. There were a list of outstanding topics and concerns as part of our report in November. There are still topics that warrant the State Board's attention as well as the department's department's attention. However, we do believe that progress has been made in some specific areas for each of the charter schools. We'll begin speaking about Hamburg. I'll talk a little bit. Janet will talk a little bit. We will take any questions, and then we'll transition to charter school, and we both have information to share on that as well. Regarding Hamburg Charter High School, the department team met with Hamburg team on December 8th, 2022. That was a Zoom meeting so that all parties could attend. Progress has been shown in many areas. The charter and the district have engaged in a 28 agreement, 28E agreement, to share operational services such as transportation, nutrition services, custodial services, and other operations. If you recall, the projected budget that they had shared previously included none of these expenditures and only included academic curricular supplies and staff salaries. While there still are some finer details to work through in their budget projections, in their line item detail, they have actually been able to show where their expenditures are anticipated to be in line with revenues for the current year and allow them to be sustainable into year two. I will continue to work with the charter as far as their projections and budget development as I believe that this is a consistent area of opportunity for them. At this time, the board for the charter school overlaps 100% with the school board. Upon further consideration by both boards, it was determined that 100% overlap is not ideal. Therefore, next year, the board anticipates turning over 100% of the charter school board and putting on a new board. Additionally, the charter school has recognized the need for the charter board to meet distinctly from the district board. Janet?
As you probably remember, we were concerned about their offer and teach. And so, upon looking at their offer and teach, we're fairly confident they will not need offer and teach. They had asked for a couple of waivers. The waivers they had asked for were for the content areas where they're gonna really need a waiver. So, what we have done in the interim is we've started a conversation about how that's going to look because, and I hope Thomas will jump in here when I misspeak, but he's my adult supervision. I've heard him say. There's really not a, there's not a way for, to move forward, to go back and do a waiver if you look at code. So, what we are hoping to do is kind of get a procedure where we can maybe modify the application and then maybe modify, maybe what's a good word for that, the contract so that we can, we can help them. We want to see the charter succeed, of course. So, we would like to be able to help them help themselves. So, that's kind of what we're looking at. The other thing I would say about offer and teach is that we had, the board had discussed the possibility of the department visiting the charter, and we would certainly want to do that and just haven't gotten those things scheduled. And then, finally, I'd say that Dr. Wells has reached out and, you know, wanting to set up a meeting where we can talk about some of these things and work some of these things out. So.
Can I clarify?
Yeah, you can.
I just want to clarify a couple of things. So, number one, the charter did recognize that they will not need offer and teach. So, we brought it up as a potential concern. They verified they will not meet offer and teach this year. So, that is, that's not a question. It's a statement of fact. The State Board already has the authority that once the year concludes, we could determine that they officially did not meet offer and teach. The State Board at that time could require a corrective action plan, which then could either force them to offer, meet the offer and teach requirements for the following school year, or to submit a waiver that would actually request, they could not meet offer and teach and still provide the anticipated programming. The tricky thing here is that the district, the charter school is recognizing this proactively and trying to address it proactively. That would allow any change to their programming to actually be effective with the coming school year instead of waiting for the offer and teach requirements not to be met, then the State Board to act potentially this summer, and then a corrective action plan to be implemented sometime, you know, over a course of time. This would allow, I believe, for swifter action. So, we met with department attorneys, and while it's not specific in statute that there is authority to offer any sort of interim amendment or anything like that, we do believe procedurally that the State Board has that authority to entertain requests for amendments to that, amendments to the application as well as amendments to the contract. If the State Board agrees to entertain that, what we would request is three things. One would be that they would resubmit the waiver portion of the application and, and this is important, for application in future requests for any other charter school that may come, is that they would also have to include any portion of the application that would be affected by this updated amendment. Specifically, they would have to provide documentation of what is stricken from the current application and contract, what would be added or amended to that contract. Additionally, each section reflecting a proposed change would need to be submitted specifically. So, some of those applications are 100 pages long. We wouldn't want to go through an entire application review process because a lot of that data was previous to the school being opened, so it wouldn't be relevant at the time of the review of the information. So, we'd want to keep the review consistent with just the information that is being changed.
One thing I would say about offer and teach, just kind of real quickly, you know, if you have a corrective action, you say, you're correct, you're offer and teach. If you have a very small high school, that sometimes is almost impossible. You're dictating to kids what courses they need to take so that the district can meet offer and teach. So, is that making sense? So, we really don't probably want that situation to occur. We want kids to have choice and take the courses that meet their needs. And so, when you talk about offer and teach, you always have to kind of keep that in mind. He's really small, and Hamburg is very small. It becomes kind of forced, and maybe it's not in the best interest of the students.
Wasn't that the issue years ago?
It was the issue, yep. When they came before the board.
I was on the board, and so, remember, that was the issue years ago. So, really, that hasn't changed much. Now, point of clarification, are the kids getting the courses they need?
I believe we, from what we're, we haven't visited yet, but from what, you know, the information we're gathering from Hamburg, I believe that they're really meeting that need of getting those kids those career pathways. They are, you know, building houses. They're getting kids trained in careers that are needed in that area, from what we can tell.
I understand that. But beyond the CTE program, are those kids getting?
They are meeting the minimum state graduation requirements, yes.
So, the kids have the opportunity to take those classes, but the standard is that they have to be offered and they have to be taught. And so, if they are legitimately offered, but there's no student interest in there, to me, that's a difference.
Yes. And that's kind of, I see where you're kind of going there. Like, minimum graduation requirements are four years of English, but offer and teach requirements are six full units, or six years. So, the kids, yes, they're getting the four, you know, they're getting those four years, but the district is passing offer and teach because they don't have, they're not offering and having kids in. And I'm just using English as an example. I'm not for sure about that particular content area, but many times, they wouldn't have all six of those English language arts. Math is another area where it's difficult for these small schools to meet because you need to have those four sequential math units for post-secondary, and then you need to have two additional math units. So, you need to have six math units offered and taught. But that's well above the minimum graduation requirements the state requires.
How many students are enrolled?
Thirty-three, thirty-four. And they only anticipate ever to grow up to 60. So, they'll always have a class size issue for any classes if they, if they have a broad. I'll offer anecdotally, too. I think one of the, they did request a waiver for foreign language. And Dr. Wells told us that. He didn't anticipate, but a lot of the kids are actually interested in foreign language. So, a lot of, so the waiver that he did request, I don't know if that waiver would, if they would request to remove that waiver or keep that waiver in place. But he does have a lot of students, he mentioned, that are taking foreign language that he wouldn't have anticipated, that he probably would have expected to enroll in one of the classes that they didn't request to waive.
To get a waiver, do you have to show you've exhausted all opportunities to do the offer and teach?
Not for charter schools. Do you want to add anything to that?
There's not a, there's not a waiver procedure for a regular district. So, like, you know, you couldn't waive that if you were just a public district. This is.
I mean, the preference is offer and teach, right.
How long are these contracts in place for?
Five years.
Five years? So, any kind of amendment or modification that we made would be in place until the five years ran out?
Correct. It would not extend that period. It would just be for the period of that five years. Unless the State Board determined that we will do this for one year and we will revisit, you certainly have that within your authority.
Okay. So, five years from when it was signed, which was last year.
Yep. So, this would be the first school year.
Are there any danger in setting precedent about veering away from offer and teach as far as requirements?
What I would say is that under the old charter law, you were exempt from offer and teach. And then, the new law, they put that in there as, there was no, there was not, there was not an exemption unless you asked for a waiver. So, I don't, I don't know, because it's a charter, I'm not sure that you would have an issue.
One of the things that we.
Just looking ahead, because there could be some small rules schools ago.
One of the things that we discussed as we were going through the potential process for them to bring forth a waiver was what would that look like if we took this process and then applied it to any similar future requests? And that would be an amendment, not just to add a waiver, but amendment to change anything about the application. And so, we tried to approach this from what would a general procedure look like that then could be modified at will by the State Board, because this would be procedural, not within rule, just something that, how we would handle requests as they come our way to put them before. So, if there was any additional information that the State Board wanted to do to help set that precedence for any future requests, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Yes. Just a couple more things to share within this context. So, if they were allowed to present an updated, an updated submission, I said there were three things we were going to require. We talked about one, which was the information they would, they would actually provide to say what was changing. And then, number two would be minutes from a public board meeting of the charter school reflecting two things. One, the approval of the application, and two, the updated contract language, so that that would be transparent to the public that it serves. And then, three would be a local narrative, and that narrative would include the purpose of the amendment, the impact to the students, and the amendment's impact to any other portion of the, of the application. And I think that's important, especially when we think about how that might be applied in future situations. And then, we would also require that information when it's presented to the State Board by our department staff that the charter school be available for questions within the room. So, we have a question to you. Is that acceptable? Would you entertain an amendment proposal to the contract?
One thing I'd say, too, is like the deadline, application deadline is in rule, not code. So, you know.
That's application for a new charter school. So, one of the things, just to give you some more information about the thought process that we followed, one of the things that we entertained was to require the charter school to complete a new application so that everything in context could be considered. We would reconsider what the budget would look like, especially if it's offer and teach. That's gonna affect the budget if they're offering different classes, right? Or any other thing. The issue with that is, the way that that application would be developed would be different from a brand-new charter school, and then we may need to come up with new metrics to review an entire new application. Additionally, in stat, in rule, it does allow for that November 1 deadline, and the problem with that is, of course, we're now into January, and so that would not be met. And so, you would have to waive your own rule in order to receive a new application. But we think because, and we were told by attorney, our attorneys, that because this is not a new application, that is amendment to the application, that that deadline would not apply, and it would be at the leisure of the State Board.
What would the timeline for the process need to be in order to meet the start of the next school year to do the amendment?
Our goal would be to have the charter school appear at the March hearing. And that way, if there were any amendments or questions about the amendments, that the charter school would have time to come back for the, I believe, the May State Board meeting and so that they can make accommodations over this. We would hope for March, though, so if they do have any. In this case specifically, the Hamburg staff, the Hamburg charter school staff are actually district staff, and they have a 28E agreement to provide the instructional, the instruction for the charter school. And so, they would go through that negotiation process. That may not be similar to other charter schools in other situations, but we do know for the district that might be an issue. So, we would want to make sure that they know who, what staff they need to hire for the next year, if possible.
So, I have a question. You're, you're saying that these, this charter school doesn't meet the offer and teach. Could you explain to me why the charter school, even though it's written in the rule code that they have to offer, offer and teach, but with 33 class, like, sizes, with 33 enrolled, and you have public schools that have 30 or less that are trying to meet offer and teach? And I'm a bit confused how that works, like.
They are, in the new charter law, they are still required to meet what they call educational standards, and that's where our offer and teach is. That's where the rules are. So, they, because when they applied, they could have asked for a waiver from those, from those standards. They did not ask for a waiver. Well, I should, I'll back up a little bit. They asked for a waiver for a couple of things, but not for what they ended up not needing. So, they have to meet the same standard that your public school has to meet. So, your public school has to meet that six English language arts, offer it and have kids in it, the six math, there's, I think, five social studies, five science, and so on. So, basically, this charter law says you need that unless you ask to have it waived. And the State Board is the sole authorizer of the charter, is the only body that can waive that. They do it in the application.
And they didn't ask to waive the right class. Okay. Thank you.
Well, it's the Iowa code that says, here's what the standards are. And the, and in general, mutually agreeable parties can amend a contract whenever they agree. But we would be amending the contract to. But we would be amending the contract to relieve people from complying with the Iowa code. But that's a process that's already there called waiver.
In the application process.
Is that, is the waiver just at the beginning or is it any?
That's, that's what, that's what we've determined, that, that's what it talks about.
All right. Okay. So the question is, do we have the authority, given the status of the code, to change these charter agreements?
Department council believes that the state board does have the authority to entertain, uh, any amendments. Which is why we thought procedurally, we should request permission for the district to bring the amendment first before entertaining the amendment so that it could be considered by the state board. And perhaps procedurally in the future, when a request to amend a contract is presented such as this, perhaps additional narrative from the charter school can be provided with it so that the reasonableness of the request to amend the contract can be considered along with this request.
Part of the approval process is that the, at the school, the charter school said that the only waiver they're requesting was for foreign language. And so that was part of the approval process. And I think it, I understand trying to meet kids' needs. I'm all for that and I'm looking beyond that. So if we have other charter schools come or even public schools come, hey, we want a waiver from these requirements. And, and the charter school that was approved for Hamburg, I very distinctly remember that was the only waiver they were asking for. Now, if they're going to ask for a lot of other waivers, I'm not saying I wouldn't support that. I just don't know, but that is a factor for me when I go to vote is that what are they asking to waive? Because I think the intent of the charter school is to be as rigorous as what a student would find in a public school setting. And if it's not as rigorous, then, then it's got to be something different or unique for, I guess, for my vote to, to grant such a waiver.
I'd agree with that.
And a public school could not ask for that waiver.
Correct.
And I don't want to gut the whole program, educational program through waivers or amendments. It would have to be judiciously done for a very valid reason. Not just because they don't want to do it.
Yeah. The other thing, um, the code talks about the reports that are required at the end of the year. If, if this charter is in violation of a, a state code, which they would be, you know, we get to the end of the year and they're still not meeting offer and teach, that would be a violation. Then the state board, uh, can require corrective actions. So, um, that would be very much like a regular school district and that, you know, when we go through and do offer and teach for Urban Dell Community School District and they're not meeting offer and teach, we would, we would do what we call a corrective action or what used to be called a citation. And that we would require them to correct. So.
Do you feel like this potentially is connected to the fact that they're not at capacity for students? So is it because they have a lower concentration of students that the need for offer and teach of multiple units is less at this point in time?
Their max student projection is sixty.
Right.
I believe that this is going to be an issue for them long-term.
So it goes to viability as much as anything.
Mm-hmm.
Is it a, I mean, we approved of it, I, I understand, but.
I think sixty would be, um, be, I think they could make it with sixty. You don't, you drop down anything below forty, you'd really just, just very, very difficult to meet offer and teach. It just really is.
And the class size, if they did force the students to meet offer and teach, the class sizes then might be so small that, you know, the student engagement and quality learning environment would likely be affected in a lot of those classes.
Yeah, I, I'm a former science teacher and I never, you know, people complain about class size, but you really don't want a class of four kids to teach science, for example, because it's just not a, it's not a good interactive way to teach, you know? You can't do labs really. So that's very, very true.
As much as I want this charter to succeed, I really do, we have to find a, a way that is manageable and not set a dangerous precedent for other schools. And that, that concerns me. And so I'm not sure what you're looking for as far as direction from, from this board at this time. I know you're just reporting and this is not an action item.
I think they were looking to see how you felt about a waiver to determine whether or not they would ask them to prepare one.
Would you entertain an amendment if it was presented by the district? The district has requested that we would allow them to submit a waiver for offer and teach. We, at this time, are unsure how to respond because there's no precedence, there's no procedure and there's no, there's no rule guidance.
And it's to be after the contract is signed.
Correct.
Just for clarification, they could have asked.
Correct.
Yes.
And they just didn't plan ahead enough.
Correct.
To see that.
Yeah.
Or they didn't know.
Or they didn't know.
It kind of showed up because this is.
But if they always were only going to have sixty.
Well, then you're right.
Then.
Yeah.
One would have thought, well, there's no way we can teach, offer and teach, all those.
That kind of falls back to us though. We're saying, okay.
I think, now we can't take any action because it's not an action item. But if the, if the department representatives want to submit something, we can either accept it or reject it.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I, I agree with John. I'd like the charter schools to succeed. I think we should do what we can to facilitate that. I just, like I said before, it has to be judiciously done and it can't be, all of a sudden there's ten waivers for, you know? And I'm not sure it's viable, cool, let alone a charters.
So really the question that you're asking is, is the board even willing to entertain? Because somebody's going to go into some work to put together the request. And then there's going to be a presentation of the board. But if the board has no interest in it.
Please let me know.
Yeah. Go to all the work. I guess that's really what they're asking. Is this something the board would even consider?
But we're not, this is really a, for us to decide at this time at all, is it? I mean, we're not, is the board going to vote, say, yes, we will or no, we won't? Because this is not an action item.
Yeah.
As we can say, if you present something, we would.
Consider it.
May I?
At least consider it.
Progress.
Right, right.
May I, may I ask one more question on this item? If we were, if a, if a charter school were to present a, uh, an amendment to a current application or current contract, would there be any additional information that any of the board members would like to see other than what I have presented? Which is the, uh, language to the application that would change minutes from a public board meeting and the local narrative?
I don't think so. I, I think if you want to present an amendment, that'd be fine. I don't think it has to be a completely new contract.
Maybe just like a reason or a statement of why this, a statement of need or something like that.
Should there be a financial impact, uh, analysis additionally? Unless you include that in what you already said.
Well, one of the things that we mentioned was to also include anything else in the application that would be changed by this amendment. And, and we're, we're trying to talk generally procedurally so that this could be applied to future situations as well. For Hamburg specifically, because the classes that they intend to teach would change, I would expect to see an updated projected budget because I do believe that that would impact, uh, staff. Yes.
Can I ask Thomas a question?
You can ask me whatever you want.
You, you think we have the authority to amend this?
Uh, willing buyer, willing seller. They use the term contract that carries the ability to modify it, which doesn't exist for public schools. Uh, it's a different, it's a different creature. But it's willing buyer and willing seller. And so if they don't make their business case to you about why the charter amendment should be, the contract should be amended, the application should be amended. Back to the point of slippery slope or concern, there is the, the first section of chapter two fifty-six E sets out all of the reasons why charters could or should exist. And I would expect that this application attend to, we're asking a waiver of offer and teach, not just because we can't meet it, but because it will do one of these enumerated good things. So there are some external checks on your decision of to be a willing seller. So back to the president's point, you know, it's not an action item right now, but a best application or a better application would attend to, um, long answer to a short question. The short question is, yes, you do, the board does have the authority to, as any party to a contract would, to amend. Whether to amend is in your discretion. The standard for how you exercise your discretion is the content of the application itself measured against the purpose of chapter two fifty-six E.
The only thing I keep running into is there could be a lot of things in a contract that you could amend that aren't mandated by the legislature. But offer and teach, as I understand it, is a legislative requirement. So now, now I'm sort of drifting away from legal to political. But are we going to get any blowback from an education committee? I don't know. That's mair.
Well, and interestingly, you know, there is current conversations about amendments to chapter twelve, which is where offer and teach lives. So the timeliness of this is sort of relevant because everything is sort of being reviewed at this point.
Okay.
I think the fact that it did allow for a waiver for charter schools says something, right? So.
Hat application though.
Yeah.
Not, not late.
I'm not saying that they shouldn't have.
Right.
When they submit their application, that they shouldn't have that, request a waiver or shouldn't have known that they would probably need this waiver. But it does allow for them to request a waiver at application. That means that, that's something that's, that's different from public schools, right? Because public schools can't even request a waiver or they don't have that ability. So I think that means that there is an ability there, um, to have a waiver.
I think my other expectation would be, trying to think of, I'm looking at Thomas as I say this, to make sure I say it okay. Is that there are other concerns that you've laid out in, that Hamburg is, is working on. And I think in considering a contract amendment and particularly in thinking about precedent for contract amendments, that I would want to see them in a place where we didn't have concerns about any other aspect of the operation. So I, I'd like to know the site visit had happened and all of those things had, you know, hearing about the overlap with the board and the charter board. And I would definitely want to know that those, those things had concrete plans moving forward.
Fair ask. It's within your sound discretion.
Bobby Hamburgh, for now.
Thank you. All right, we will switch gears to Choice Charter School. Uh, the department team met with the Choice Charter School team on December fifteenth. It was scheduled earlier in the month, but due to illness at the charter school, uh, we did reschedule so that all, uh, all of their team could attend. Um, progress here was shown in areas as well. However, there are additional areas that warrant continued conversation. I don't know if they're concerning. We're just going to continue talking about them until we get to a point of where we can determine whether or not a concern exists. So first we'll talk about student enrollment projections. So in November, we talked about what their projected budget looks like. And of course, that is highly contingent upon what that revenue side looks like. And there were multiple, uh, student enrollment projections that they provided. They did not provide an updated, uh, student enrollment projection as requested. Instead, they did something else. They provided a break even, uh, budget based on how many students it would take to pay for the budget that they have intended, um, to follow. Uh, if I use the earlier student enrollment projections that were provided, it appears it may be reasonable, uh, that they would meet that. If they do get the students that they're intending, then they would, uh, meet, uh, they're, they would not, uh, incur a budget shortfall at the end of the year and they may have enough to sustain them into, uh, the next year. However, uh, the information that we requested regarding the student enrollment projections, uh, has not been provided. Uh, last we heard, they had about a hundred and ten. Uh, and so, uh, we'll see what that looks like. They've had a couple of graduations. Uh, they've also had a couple of dropouts or, or students that withdrew. I'm not sure if they withdrew or dropped out, uh, but students that definitely withdrew from the charter school. Uh, I asked them to consider, uh, some of those things within their projections to show, uh, those students that are graduating early, they're not going to get their daily revenue, uh, for those students for the rest of the year. They only receive revenue for the days that the charter school actually serves those students. So once they're graduates or once they leave the district, they no longer are paid to serve those students. Uh, I, additionally, considering the population that they serve of the at-risk, uh, of the at-risk population, there is a high level of, uh, of dropouts with, with that, uh, population. A hundred percent of them were dropouts at one point. We do not have a high graduation rate for returning dropouts. I asked them to, uh, let me know what number they were using to consider any that would not eventually graduate. And the number that they're considering is zero. Uh, so they did not consider any of the, the students that they're recruiting would actually not, uh, would not graduate. I also asked for how many students they anticipate would graduate this year that would not give them the full funding. Uh, we did not receive that information either. Um, so I hope that they're continuing to have internal discussions on what that might look like. Uh, additionally, uh, for board meetings, there is, there are a couple of things there that are, um, they're different. I'm not sure if they're concerning yet, so I still want to continue to learn more. Uh, but number one, the charters, the charter board only plans to meet four times a year. Considering the level of operational oversight, considering the questions about budgets, uh, considering the questions about student enrollment, it just seems, um, maybe that's not enough. Um, there's nothing in, in statute or rule that says they need to meet more often. Um, so I just want to make sure that it's often enough that they can be involved at the level that they need to be involved with those operational decisions and governing oversight. One of the things that, uh, does warrant additional follow-up is that, uh, in the board minutes that, um, when they last met, they identified an audit firm. So I hadn't heard of this audit firm before, so I just, I pulled a string and I, I seen where it led. Um, so this accounting firm is not on the list of auditors that have performed audits of public schools in Iowa in the past as reflected on the site of the Auditor of State. Pursuant to Iowa Administrative Code one ninety-three A six, uh, an auditor must hold a CPA. This firm is not listed as a certified, a public accounting firm according to the Iowa Accountancy Board. The firm itself is not required to be listed if it does have a CPA or LPA in their name, and it does not. However, the audit firm website does not list, um, uh, their employees. So we were unable to verify whether any of the employees, um, held a CPA either. Um, so that'll be something that we continue to work with them. This is potentially concerning for two reasons. Number one, if the audit firm has not conducted an audit of a school district before, um, a public school district, this could be concerning. Additionally, the charter school has a brand new SBO. And of course, the charter school itself is a brand new charter school. And so all of those three things together just weren't a little bit of, um, concern and additional follow-up. The charter school committed to providing the, um, charter board with information on enrollment and budget projections. However, their most recent board meeting, which was held in December, did not contain either of these items. Although they did note that it would be, gun, uh, be provided in future meetings. However, I, I think their next meeting is going to be probably in March or April. Um, at that time, they're very close to the end of the school year. And so I'm not sure how much, uh, input, oversight or effect that meeting would then have. One of the things that we noted at the November meeting was that a line item for background checks was zero dollars. So that was, uh, concerning because districts are required to perform those background checks. Within the updated information that was submitted by the charter school, they noted that Jordal Academy, uh, which is another, uh, institution that was run by Dr. Cipia Knight, is actually performing the background checks for Choice Charter School employees. Um, we believe that this also requires additional, uh, conversation. Unless a twenty-eight E agreement is in place between the charter school and Jordal Academy, it appears they may be, uh, breaking three Iowa statutes. One would be, um, the school employees receiving the background investigations. Another one would be the rediscrimination of child abuse information. Another one would be the rediscmination of child abuse information, and another potentially would be the rediscmination of dependent adult abuse information. So again, we just, more things that require conversation. Going back to those goals that we talked about, having this conversation with the charter school, presenting the information to the state board, we just want to make sure that we're doing what we can to help ensure that we're good partners for them and that they are implementing all of the statutes that they are required to do so. I'll turn it over to Janet.
Well, they did provide us with a lot more information, and they provided us with an updated course catalog, and it looked pretty good, with the exception of there was no fine arts in the course catalog. The problem is that they run what they call a HECS system, and they have six HECSs a year. So when they submit to student reporting in Iowa, their courses and their student enrollment, they, they get red flagged because they don't appear to be meeting offer and teach. But because they are competency-based, it's my opinion as a school improvement consultant that we probably really cannot determine that they have not met offer and teach until we reach the end of the year. So it's, it's just a situation where this is different than what we have experienced. The competency-based and the way that they set up their system, and I, I believe, Cynthia would tell us, the way this system is set up so that she can move kids through content, you know, because she's working with kids that are overaged and undercredited. So it's kind of their way of working through it. I also would say that we were concerned about, given all the, you know, cybersecurity issues that the state's having, we were concerned about some of their online content and whatnot. And they have given us more information about that. We'll dig into it. And then also, when we met with Dr. Knight and, and other employees of Choice, we asked them whether we could virtually visit or kind of have a hybrid type of visit, and they were agreeable to that. So I, I would say that we need to get a visit on the books for Choice also, and do something kind of hybrid-ing, so to kind of look at their, the virtual environment and also the fiscal environment, so.
So the question remains for them is, are they going to be financially liable? Were they projecting like 300 students?
Yes, they were projecting 300 students. However, their, their, the way that they reflected the 300 students was that they were going to receive 100% of the state aid funding for each of those 300 students. So they began the year with 50 students, then they increased to about 60. Last time we spoke, they had about 80. Now they have about 100, 110 or so. But they're not going to receive 100% funding for those students. So even if they continue to add students, even if they get to 300, it's not going to be the same amount of revenue that they had anticipated to receive.
So they base their revenue projections on 1.0 FTE?
Yes.
And so basically, they'd have to serve close to 400 to 500 students to get to 300 FTE, maybe more.
Without, without other, other revenues taking the place of that, that missed state aid, such as grant dollars.
So what, what do we have to help compel them providing the missing information?
I can just ask again. We could compel them to direct them to appear, to provide the information. I don't, I don't know if that's, you know, if we've risen to that step yet. It just continues to be conversations. I also know that there was going to be some timeline issues. We had originally planned to meet, I think it was the last week of November, one of their staff members that wanted, needed to appear had COVID, and so it was a few weeks before we were able to get the team together. And so it wasn't until December 15th that we were able to get that, that team and team were able to get together. And so if you consider the two holidays that we had in there and that, the break that they had for their staff, and I believe one of the people that are instrumental, at least from the, the way that this was presented to us, their school administrator, I think is what he is on the books, he has a full-time job, he does this on the side, so he was concerned about the amount of time, even though we gave them, it was three weeks in time, you know, for business days, it was less. And so they were a little concerned about being able to get quality information to us by last week. And so I hope that it was a matter of having time to develop the information, although these are conversations we've had. Every time we ask for information, I do believe we get better information. So I think that they're also developing their internal processes to be able to have these conversations. I know right now, they're in a big enrollment push, just from conversations with them and reading, especially the last board minutes, they're having some marketing campaigns occur right now, trying to push for enrollment that second semester. So I believe if they were to provide some enrollment numbers, their next report for SRI is this month, and it's, it should be right after the beginning of their second semester. So within three weeks, we should have a good idea of what at least the revenue side is going to look like, what happens with the student enrollment information that's presented through our student reporting and Iowa software, our application at the end of, by the end of this month. That will adjust or start to reconcile with the end of state aid payments. So we would know then the amount they're going to receive for the next four months until that final reconciliation in June. So assuming those students would matriculate, their assumption is none will drop out. So if we assume, go with their assumptions, deferring to the, to the local board, 100% of those assumptions, we should have an idea whether or not they're going to be pretty close to meeting that.
We would have monthly meetings with Choice. I'm correct, aren't I, Thomas? Your adult supervision is setting that up?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the plan that we will start.
Would the board object, or would you? And I, I'm understanding that this isn't a resistance from them in providing information, it's more of a timing thing. But I also am sensitive to wanting to make sure that we receive a complete report in the status of the charter schools, and particularly knowing we have pending legislation and, and different things that are happening. So would it be fair for us to get an update on the information? Would the board feel comfortable asking for that as part of, if we do meet in February, having this come back with the pieces of information that you're missing?
Absolutely.
And if you pass that to them, that we'd like that update in February?
Yes.
Okay.
opposed to that.
And I think, you know, if you ask for a projected enrollment and you get a break even analysis, to me, that doesn't answer the question.
Correct.
And, and I would not look upon that well. We need, this enrollment is the big question here.
Yes.
It's kind of a dot, not give it to you. Hopefully you'll have it.
I think it's maybe a realistic view that they won't keep 100% of their students once they enroll. That'd be wonderful to be answered.
So I think going back to all of the questions that you shared that were either unanswered or zeros would be the information that I'd be most interested in having clarified, and that as part of our February agenda.
I will make sure that happens.
All right. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Let's see.
One more.
One more.
Cassandra.
One more.
Yes, I agree. It's kind of a double whammy, isn't it?
Budget Review Committee met December 13th, 2022, for their regular December session. I'm going to review with you the summary of action that took place. If you have questions as I talk about each of these actions, please feel free to, to stop me to ask. Under the committee informational items, the committee reviewed the negative unspent balances. These are preliminary FY22 unspent balances. The reason that these are reviewed is to determine whether or not the districts that preliminarily incurred a negative unspent balance would then be required to prevent, present a corrective action plan to the SBRC. For the two districts that were presented, Iowa City and Comanche, both districts are projected to be positive when final FY22 numbers come out. Comanche specifically had a special education deficit that was in excess of the amount by which they were negative. So that MSA, that Modified Supplemental Amount or Spending Authority, has already been awarded, and so that we can verify that they're, they're going to be positive. Iowa City, same thing. Between the special education MSA that was awarded, as well as the LEP excess costs that was awarded, they will also, are projected to end FY22 final with a positive unspent balance.
Yeah, but that's not much.
It's not, it's about $100,000 for Iowa City.
I mean, that's like less than 0.005% of their budget.
Yes.
So I'm assuming that the message has gone out that, yeah, you're not negative, but you're not in very good shape.
So beginning with last year, the SBRC has begun to require fiscal updates for districts that are trending toward, or actually not trending toward, but for districts that are having, would have incurred a negative unspent balance if it weren't for those categorical balances. So Iowa City actually appeared last January to actually provide that fiscal update. They had not projected to be negative. However, again, with that special education deficit, pretty close. And, and I looked the prior year, they were also had preliminarily incurred a negative unspent balance, but that was by less than the amount of the special education. So a general summary from them is that they're in a period of enrollment growth, and they've opened a number of new schools in the past few years. So the, the local narrative tells a different story. So they're not in a period of decline. It's not that they're not getting rid of staff. It's kind of a different challenge for them locally, that they're working to actually build the facilities and grow that team to prepare them to serve the influx of students that they're receiving. They also recently opened up an online school during the pandemic. However, they had been planning to do so even prior to the pandemic, and so that has also stretched some resources there too, as they, as they grow to plan for that enrollment growth.
Is that the same with Comanche?
No. So Comanche is in a different situation. They actually appeared also later at the December hearing to provide a fiscal update because they were still negative if you take out those category, the, the authority related to the categoricals, and they are projecting to be negative even beyond their special education deficit for FY23 and potentially FY24. The board has begun to make some, some changes and, and staff changes and budget, budget changes. They're just not going to be able to do it quick enough in order to right the ship. So they do, they are planning to be negative at the end of FY23.
You said they were going to be negative in FY24 as well?
Potentially. They'll be, they're like, they're projecting not a lot, like 100,000 or two, so it might, it might.
They have, they have some time. With staffing for next year, contracts aren't due until April sometime.
And that's what, that's what they're working on. So depending on how much they can slow it down this year will help to impact next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Also presented as part of the committee informational items is the state decile ranks. So this is the, that unspent balance per pupil in the district. So one of the things that the SBRC wrestles with every time that a request is made is, does the district need this? Do they need the additional spending authority that may impact local taxpayers? So one of the metrics that they use to help determine whether that need exists is looking at that unspent balance per pupil. Additionally, they've begun looking at that unspent balance per pupil when you take away any authority that's related to categorical balances. While both of those balances per pupil did increase, the difference between the two decreased by about $7 over the past year. So the average UAB per pupil in the state is just under $5,000, and the UAB per pupil as categoricals, so once you take out any authority related to categoricals, is just The committee took action to approve supplementary waiting. So while this is presented by the department, it's actually certified to be sent to the Department of Management. That was just over 4,000 additional, you could look at it as additional 1.0 dollars that will be sent to districts. The district also, or, the committee also approved a number of class action items. So these are items that are presented by the department, but on behalf of one, two, or 300 school districts, depending on the type of request. There were approved for 157 districts, MSA, so again, that, just that spending authority for increased enrollment applications. So this would be districts that had, in comparing last year's certified enrollment to this year's certified enrollment, they actually see the enrollment increase. So they're funded, though, based on last year's numbers. So this gives them at least the authority to spend those additional dollars in the year in which they're serving that increased enrollment population. They also approved for 251 students, an amount of just over $39 million for open enrollment out applications. So this is for students who are on the district's count this year, who are opening out to another district, meaning that resident district is paying tuition. However, those students were not included on the prior year headcount, so they weren't funded necessarily for those students. The committee also approved for 180 eligible districts, just under $13 million for limited English proficiency applications. So this is for students that are in those LEP or English proficient programs beyond the five years that are, that are funded through statute. They additionally approved for 136 districts, just under $20 million for costs that related to offering the LEP program that were in excess of any funding available. They also reviewed AEA special education balances. None of them were in excess of 10%, so no action was necessary. They also reviewed special education balances and approved for 282 districts, over $144 million in spending authority. They also reviewed the special education waitings. For Level 1, that currently is 0.72. For Level 2, it's 1.21. At Level 3, it's 2.74. So those waitings are reviewed annually, but they're only voted upon every other year. So this year was just an action, or, excuse me, just an informational item, so they just made a discussion. Generally, what happens then is the committee has a discussion to tell the department what to prepare for the following work session in order to have a conversation about what would the impact be if the committee voted to change those waitings. So generally, did the department then in the following work session provide some scenarios to say if it changed by this amount at this level, here would be the outcome. The committee also approved for Charter Oakview Community School District, a certificate of need, so the district could use save allocations to pay off a new construction loan in the amount of 1.79 million. They also approved for West Monona School District, the authority to use the unexpended fund, general fund balance of $402,000 to transfer to their capital projects fund so that they could purchase a new fire alarm system. They accepted the district's corrective action plan for Iowa City, related to their preliminary negative unspent balance. They accepted Hamburg's corrective action plan related to late fiscal filing, although they did require that the, that the district modify a couple of things in that corrective action plan and submit an updated copy of the plan to the department. The committee also, for Sidney Community School District, tabled their, the approval of their corrective action plan, required amendments to the corrective action plan, and required the district to appear again at the March meeting in order to provide an updated corrective action plan. They approved and accepted Waco's corrective action plan, also related to late fiscal filing. And they reviewed fiscal updates as informational items from both Comanche and Lewis Central, as both districts would have incurred a negative unspent balance if it weren't for the, their categorical balances. Are there any additional questions?
I have none. Other members?
Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you.
Let's take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 2:10. Condition of Iowa's Community Colleges Report.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Jeremy Varner, Head of the Division of Community Colleges and Workforce Prep, and I have with me Allison Jepson, who led the creation of this project. I'm just going to make a few quick remarks and then turn it over to her to kind of take you down the cut. We also have with us Vlad Passis, who is our expert on all things community college data. So if you start throwing hardball questions at us mid-afternoon, he'll help us get through those. So this is our flagship report on our system of community colleges. We put this together each year with fiscal year information. So this is FY22, the 2122-year comprehensive report about all things related to our community college system, primarily based on the community college MIS, but includes other data necessary to give you that full picture of what our institutions are, are doing. So this covers, as I said, sort of all aspects, right? It's got the credit enrollment that you normally expect. It's got the credit enrollment that you normally expect, but also non-credit enrollment, program information, human resources, financials, financial aid, student success and outcomes, the full breadth of what our institutions are doing. I was with you in the fall and provided information on Fall '22. This data is older than that, but it's much more comprehensive. Because when I was here in front of you in the fall, I talked about the enrollment for the fall term. This is the prior fiscal year, but it's much more comprehensive. So some of the themes are the same. We did see a last fiscal year in uptick in credit enrollment, which we were pleased to see almost half a percent increase in credit student enrollment after several years of decline. But this also includes other things that wouldn't be taken in the fall enrollment report, like non-credit enrollment, where we saw a 7% increase. That's a pretty exciting thing for us to see. That includes, the non-credit enrollment activities include a lot of things our institutions do, from adult basic education to state mandated courses. The majority of them, though, are job training offerings. So we're talking about training, CNAs, truck drivers, welders, this sort of thing. So seeing 7% growth in that area and seeing a rebound in that enrollment after a couple of years declines is a really exciting thing to see. The report also contains substantial data on student success and outcomes with our guided pathways initiatives and and other things our institutions are doing at the campus level, really focused on improving student success. So I'm pleased to share the performance information that's in there. And you'll find that our colleges are on the whole in these metrics outperforming their peers nationally. So we're really pleased with the state of our colleges. In this report, you'll also see the bread and butter of our community colleges, and that's providing Iowans with pathways to economic security, closing employer skills gaps, and preparing Iowans to be productive and rewarding careers. So it'll be clearly highlighted. One of the things this report does beyond just providing hard data, we all want the quantitative information and the numbers, it also provides stories. There's a narrative component. There are things that the department's communications team put together throughout the year. Those get amalgamated and put into this report. So you have more context to what the data is telling you, right? So you'll see some things related to work-based learning and the gap tuition assistance program, what that looks like on the ground reflected in the report. And I'd also say that the pictures you see in this report, none of them are stock photos. They are all pictures from our campuses of our students and instructors. And we really think it looks nice. Our team does a really, really good job putting that together. The last thing I'll say before I turn it over to Allison is that this report is supplemented by an extensive platform, I guess, of of data online. So there are interactive tools that let you slice and dice the data, pull out information about specific institutions, compare any number of years that you want. Lots of really interesting and exciting things you can do to dig deeper in what's in this report. If 150 pages of data isn't enough, there is a lot more online, right? So so with that, I'll turn it over to Allison to kind of quickly take you down the cut. We'll try to be brief with time, understanding where you're at.
Thank you for having us. I am waiting for, still waiting for some access to show the presentation via the Zoom. But I will get started just with some of the data. So. Perfect. Thank you. So as Jeremy noted, a lot of this captures enrollment, enrollment, credit enrollment, which was up in Academic Year '22 and went with 117,464 credit students. This is an increase of 0.4% from the previous year. Credit hours went down 1.5% though, to an average of 13.1. You can see those numbers reflected here. Of those credit students, 56.2% were female, and we had a record high of minority enrollment with 24.3%. And the median age is 18, and that is lower than most of the community colleges in the nation. And that is due to our large amount of joint enrollment, which we're one of the leaders in the country. For non-credit enrollment in Academic Year '22, it was 151,294 students. And they were, that was an increase of 7.3% over the last academic year. And their contact hours increased 18.8% over the last academic year. Of those students, 51.7% were male, and 22% reported being a minority. And what's important to note with this reporting, it's that's not for overall students, only students who actually reported their race were counted in those numbers. Joint enrollment, of course, as as mentioned, is always a big area for the community colleges. Joint enrollment of high of high school students increased 5.8% to 50,082 students in Academic Year '22. And that's, joint enrollment has grown about 124.5% since fiscal year 2004. So we're still in under 20 years that we've had that much growth. And that's an average annual increase of 4.9%. And in last academic year, 1,804 students received awards while still in high school. And that's a 60% increase just over the last, 60.7% increase over just the last academic year. For online enrollment, an online course is one that is put entirely online. It's not hybrid. Over half of all community college students, at 59.1%, took an online course. The number of students taking online courses did decrease 9.9%, but that is still higher than pre-pandemic levels. And some of that, of course, was due to more classes being in session again and students choosing to return to in-person classes. The student awards increased 3% to 17,460 awards conferred. And for the first time in the history of the MI, of the community college IS, certificates were the top award received, closely followed by the Associate of Applied Sciences and then the Associate of Arts. And you can see that awards breakdown there. For credit programs, and these lead to a certificate, a diploma, or an associate degree, and are designed to prepare a student for immediate employment or occupations requiring less than a four-year degree or to transfer to a four-year school. Of the 1,369 award options offered statewide in CTE programs study, the majority were in health science, manufacturing, and architecture and construction. For non-credit programs, these often learn to industry certifications that hold labor market value. And these credentials allow students to progress in their careers and with entry and exit points, so they can keep advancing in their areas. These programs include courses and basics, include basic skill development that prepares students for entering the workforce, and also technical courses. And there were 265,927 non-credit courses, which is an increase of 14,340 courses over the last academic year. And most of these were people going back to enhance their employability. With adult education and literacy, in Academic Year '22, there were 12,566 students, which is an increase of 17.7% over the last academic year. And you can see the breakdown between adult basic education and English as a Second Language enrollment. And of these students, 48.8% received a measurable skills gain. That's the MSG you see here to show that they have made progress by being part of these programs. Here you'll see the Skilled Worker and Job Creation Funds. And there are several programs that are under this category. A particular note, and a particular note in the report itself is the Gap Tuition Assistance Program, which was expanded in the last year to be more accessible and have the requirements changed to allow more participants to benefit from that program. And there are 1,163 students who were a part of that program. For economic development registered apprenticeships, there were 4,819 new jobs pledged, 798 open agreements, leading to 40,604 new jobs pledged. And you can see that with this program, that's, it's, the Iowa apprenticeship program, this is a reflection of FY '21 data, since FY '22 data was not available. For student success, it's measured whether somebody received an award or was then transferred to another institution. As you can see here, 42.2% was the overall graduation rate, and 25.3% was the overall transfer rate. So that's overall success rate of 49.8%. And it's important to note, as I've shown here, between our Iowa schools and other community colleges and schools of similar size that are part of the national voluntary framework of accountability, Iowa has higher rates than the national average. So we graduate or transfer at 59.6%, according to Academic Year 15.16 to 16 cohort versus 53.7 nationally. You can see in AY 18 or 19 to 19, 51.9% reached 30 or more credits, and that's compared to 46% nationally.
So I want to back that up once.
Sure.
So national cohorts, meaning?
In that academic year of schools who reported to the voluntary framework of accountability, those are, these are the average success rates nationally of those schools that reported versus what it was for Iowa.
They tracked them over a six-year period, so the data lags quite a bit.
So for tuition and fees, the average end state cost of enrollment was $206.08, which is up 3.4% from the last year, which puts Iowa in the 90th percentile of ranking for cost of enrollment. For financial aid, federal aid was 213.9 million, which is down from 222.1 million. State aid was 3 million, down from 5.5. And you'll see there the default rate for the FY '19 cohort. And that is down a bit to some of that because of the freezes and some of the repayment. But that is a reflection of students in community colleges. And Last Dollar Scholarships were like the largest state-funded financial aid program. Along with the images that are featured in the report, all the community colleges do submit a, an community impact story, which talks about how they, you know, as administrators, their staffs, students, interact with the the community. And some of the stories that I've chosen to highlight here are Iowa Central Community College's partnership with the Mission of Mercy's Free Dental Clinic to provide services to those in need. And that they had quite a few students in their program participate in that, which is a large state event. The Eastern Iowa Community College began their online American Sign Language program, which expands on their in-person sign language program. And that has quite a bit expanded access to that program in that there's a lot of need for for people who have those skills. Western Iowa Tech expanded on campus mental and emotional health supports and services. And that includes having more counselors, doing more events that support physical and mental well-being. And that is a very 360 initiative at their campus this past academic year. So the special sections that are featured, again, a reflection of some of our stories that we feature throughout the year, are work-based learning course naming, which will allow us to better track the growth and impact of work-based learning courses. The story of a student named Megan Lindsay, who was positively affected by AEL programs at Eastern Iowa Community College. And then two stories about and showing the various aspects of gap expansion and how that has positively impacted students and how they've been able to receive awards and also have some of their needs met with some of the difficulties that become, come along with accessing educational opportunities. So just in conclusion, our report is a, is a full effort by many people and the community colleges and the team here at the department. And the guiding principles of the community colleges are open access, affordable education, economic growth, community support, and value to the state. Are there any questions?
I've got a question. I want to say that our tuition rate is like the 90th percentile. How does that balance in comparison to what the state contributes as far as state dollars going towards community colleges? Where does Iowa rank?
So I don't know that we have a ranking of state dollars for our community college system in terms of where it ranks. Certainly Iowa and the Upper Midwest on the whole have relatively high tuition rates relative to the rest of the country. Our financial section does break out information on our, how our community colleges are financed. And when you look at Fund I, operating balances, right? Where does the money come from? Really, there are two primary sources. It's the general aid and it's tuition and fees. There is a small amount that comes from property tax. Each region can do 20, 20 and a quarter mils on the operations. That's been capped since the late 60s. So that generates maybe 4% of operating revenue, something around that, plus or minus a percent. There's also federal dollars flowing in. I don't know what the percentage shows in this report. We had an influx of federal dollars during the pandemic. I'm not sure exactly what percentage it accounts for. Historically, it's been around 4%, 5%, certainly just at least over 3%. But the dominant, dominant funding streams are state and tuition.
To be the 90th percentile, that's not necessarily a good thing.
Right. Yeah, affordability, our institutions are really, community colleges are about open access, right? And access can mean, you know, taking anybody based on their academic readiness. It can mean, you know, driving distance, right? Our community colleges are established to be within an hour's drive of every Iowan. Access also means affordability, right? And there are state financial aid programs, like the Last Dollar Scholarship and Kibbe Grant, which help offset some of the costs. On the non-credit side, the Gap Tuition Assistance Program. But affordability concerns certainly remain there.
Thank you.
You bet.
Before the team goes, I just want to give some special recognition to all of the work. So thank you, Jeremy, Allison, and Vlad. And a very special thank you to Allison, as she's making a bit of a transition here and leaving our team. So thank you for all of the work that you've done, not only from, from me as the Chair of the Community College Council, but from the board as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison and Jeremy. All right. Next on the agenda, Iowa School Performance Profiles.
Is that Jay? Hello. It's going to be me, Sojith Huntington, as well as Barbara Olin. And we'll try to be brief, considering you're behind schedule. If you could, Steve, maybe also allow me to present. That'd be great. So while he's doing that, in October, the end of October, we released our Iowa School Performance Profiles, and I'll get to the website. This is really, it's our annual release of federal designations. But the site itself represents a, a combination of both the federal report card requirements under the Every Student Succeeds Act as well as state accountability. And, and so we just want to give you a brief update about the website itself and then get into the school improvement activities that schools are, that are designated annually to do over the next year to three years.
You should have got a notification to make you a panelist now.
Okay, in my email?
I'm right in Zoom itself.
Is that the end?
Should I leave and come back? There we go.
Check now. There we go.
In instance, or because we're trying to be brief, I'll jump through a lot of background and just jump into the performance profiles. So with the fall release, this is a reset of accountability determinations, basically for the last three years due to COVID. You know, in, in spring of '20, tests were canceled. So there was no way for us to really do designations and to provide sort of a fair score, if you will, for meetings. And this wasn't just an Iowa issue. All states were given and received a waiver for accountability requirements during that period of time. So with the fall, or the October release, it really represents performance during the 21-22 school year. And one thing I do want to mention, for the first time, we have, so schools are designated as comprehensive, which represents being in the lowest 5% of schools. There's roughly 2,000 schools in the state, I'm sorry, 1,300 schools in the state. So it's that roughly lowest 5%. And then they're also designated for targeted, which means that one or more subgroup, so students with disabilities, Hispanic students, students eligible for free reduced price. lunch. So a student group or multiple student groups could also be performing as low as that lowest 5%. So there's the extended and targeted designations. But then after multiple years within, within the accountability system, a new set of designations for those that aren't making progress can be identified as extended, targeted, or extended comprehensive. So basically, the lowest 5% didn't make progress to get out of being the lowest 5%. Or the targeted subgroup that originally identified the school also didn't make progress. Here's the list of measures that are included in a school's overall score. So participation in assessments. One thing I'll mention in particular this year that we saw was that a lot of high schools missed the participation rate. So within ESSA, it says that every, you know, all schools need to meet a minimum participation rate of 95% of the students taking the state assessment. And if they don't, then you get an automatic lower score because you didn't hit that minimum. In particular, if you look at high school, we had a lot of high schools not hitting participation, which is, which is relatively new. I mean, in a, in a typical year, we have 99% of kids statewide participating. And when you look at high school grades, that drops down to just above that 95%. We also include proficiency, average achievement, student growth, et cetera. All of these measures are combined into an overall score. This is the weight of each, the value of each of the measures that go into the overall score. And you could see there's slightly different versions between middle school and elementary school. And high school includes things like, you know, post-secondary readiness and graduation rate. So that's why the, both the measures and percents are slightly different. At the bottom, I briefly touched on this. This is the, the 10 subgroups in which a school could be identified for, for, for a targeted status. And then I mentioned the extended comprehensive and extended targeted support. I'm just going to just jump over to the site briefly.
Jay, could you back up one, please?
Yes.
Graduation rate below 67.1.
Correct. So if-
How many schools are even in that category? Approximately?
Four or five.
Yeah. Not very many, and I think most of them are alternative.
Yes.
Alternative schools.
Yes.
Okay, that explains a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of, so, so this wasn't just an arbitrary number that we came up with.
Yeah.
Barbara, and hi. It's actually in the statute that says, you know, a low graduation rate, and it's defined within ESSA. I think, you know, we're lucky as a state that, you know, graduation rates tend to be really high. So, you know, those schools that are serving a population of, you know, of students that have either dropped out or are not, you know, really flourishing within a regular setting makes it a little bit more challenging.
All right. That explains it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good question. So just briefly show the site. It's iowaschoolperformance.gov. We get a tremendous number of visitors to the site annually. I think it's like over 4 million. So there's a lot of interest in people looking at, you know, the State Department of Education's take on school accountability. So how, you know, in particular, folks that are moving to a community or are thinking about moving to a different community, there's a lot of interest in the site. So if you click the View State Report, it'll just give you information about the demographics of the students we serve. This learning measures dropdown represents those accountability measures that are combined for every school in the state. So there's a score for every school and a score for every student group in the state. So you can not only see how schools performing overall, but how Hispanic students or students in poverty are doing within that school. The additional measures really represents a lot of other contextual data that is either statutorily required within ESSA or state law, or something that we think is really important to be included in terms of context. So just a few examples, chronic absenteeism, that measure. So if you want to answer the question, you know, what are the percent of students that are chronically absent? So that's missing 10% or more of the school year. So roughly 18 days or 10% of hours. This number has risen both nationally and certainly within Iowa schools. But it gives you information about the percent of students that are missing, you know, that 10%. So that's one example. Another one, we've got post-secondary enrollment for both at the state level and for every school and district. Again, not an accountability measure, but if we're asking the question, how well does an Iowa school or district or the state do in terms of preparing students to enroll in community college or region universities or any institute of higher education? That will provide that information. Staff retention is another great example. If you go to the ratings, this will give you the, those, the list of schools that are designated, either comprehensive or extended, targeted or extended, and whatever year of support. So this is a fairly long list. You can see there's 33 schools that are in that lowest 5%. And then an additional 337 that have been identified for one or more student group. Lastly, so we've been adding to the site as folks ask for things. We do receive a lot of requests for, please just give me the data. And so what that is, it doesn't give you everything. We will slowly add all the additional measures. Right now, you can, for every school, you know, those 1,200 or so schools, you can download all of the data, that's accountability data that's within the site. We also have another, a bunch of like search and compare features, but for the sake of brevity, I won't get into any of that. So that's just like the, you know, if we were in an elevator, it'd be a long ride. But that's the super quick version about the update to the site and some of the, the features we've added. Oh, yeah.
We don't have to.
Keep going. I'll drive. So Barbara's going to jump into the, so this is the, the information that schools received in October, which was really sort of the beginning of the, of the process. So now what do districts do now that they've received their designations?
So Jay shared a little bit. This is kind of like a hard restart for our schools. So everybody got a new designation here, or they fell off designation. So we had some schools that are no longer designated that were, that we need to celebrate. And so we have comprehensive, extended comprehensive, targeted, and extended targeted sites that we need to work with. And in the first year of designation, it's really called a planning year. And that's the year that we really need to look across data and needs assessment to identify what are the systemic system and needs that we need to address within that system? And then prioritize what the, what those things are in order to then match that with an evidence-based solution that would have the biggest bang for the buck. So prioritize the need, prioritize the evidence-based strategy, and then create that plan. And then years two and three are really implementation of that evidence-based, of the action plan and evidence-based practices that were selected. That doesn't mean that there's not probably implementation happening right now. This, the schools aren't doing nothing. They're doing things right now. And so they are engaged in implementation of really good practices, but it's those things that they have identified that, that would be implemented in years two and three. So what you see here are the ways that they engage in identification of what's really needed. So if we don't figure out exactly what the, what the systemic need is, then whatever we do is not really going to matter because it doesn't actually fit that need. So one of the things that they do is a resource allocation review. Now, in ESSA, we are, we are required to work with schools, not districts, but that doesn't mean districts have nothing to do. They're engaged as well. And one of the things that they're engaged in is this resource allocation review, which looks across their resources, across their schools, whether they're designated or not, to, to identify resource inequities. And to think about how that they can address those resource inequities if they do exist. And the rest of this is really done by school buildings. So the district does the resource allocation review, and then buildings do what's called a data review. And they use that Iowa School Performance Profile data in that data review to understand and identify what are their, their biggest needs with, within what those data tell them. We have guides for each one of these. We have people trained to walk through and to facilitate each one of these, these things. So at the end, then they have priority statements that this is what we need to be working on based on our resource allocation review. This is what we need to be working on based on our data review. And then we have a systemic look across the five major conceptual areas of MTSS and a needs assessment. We're required to do a needs assessment. The one that we use is the self-assessment of multi-trut system of support implementation, or the SAMI. And those five areas are leadership to ensure that we have that strong leadership team to be able to lead all of the work. Infrastructure, which includes resources, professional development, to make sure that we have that infrastructure needed in order to support the work. Assessment and database decision-making, ensuring that we have valid and reliable data in order to make our decisions about need, as well as our solutions. And then a strong, robust, universal tier, that core instruction, as well as supplemental intensive needs for those students who need the most. So that's their, that's what they engage in for the SAMI. This really, the resource allocation review, data review, and self-assessment of MTSS implementation takes people through the first three steps of our continuous improvement process, which is to kind of identify need, assess current state, and where you want to go, prioritize, and to plan. And then years two and three are really focused on implementation and evaluation. All that, those things lead to developing a strong action plan that can lead them forward into implementation. So one of the things that I just want to point out is that there are some differences in what extended sites need to do as opposed to the comprehensive or targeted sites. If you have a designation of comprehensive or CSI, that means you were identified for the first time. But if you have a designation of extended comprehensive, that means that you were previously comprehensive and you are still comprehensive. You're still in the bottom 5%. And so there's additional things that need, need to happen for those extensive comprehensive sites. And some of those things include that they need to have a selective evidence-based strategy that the Iowa Department of Education says, here are the evidence-based strategies, right? There you go, pick one. And the other is that we need to direct teacher leadership and compensation support or resources toward the implementation of that. So extended CSI are required to do that. And we highly recommend extended targeted sites to do that as well. And the last thing I just want to show you is, this is a very easy way to look at what's required and what's recommended. And if you have access to this PowerPoint, there's a link that says ESSA Supports 2022, 23. Link there that you can go to, that, you have access to that at any time so that you can see, you know, what's required, what's not, and what year. Like what does it mean for this year to be doing this? So, so all districts that have one or more comprehensive or targeted sites in them doing that resource allocation review, we have to do that in order to develop the action plan for year one, but you need to be doing it every year to see your progress. It's also an evaluation, right? So the data review is also an evaluation, how, how have you done? The SAMI also includes evaluation of the progress component. That's what we're doing this year and then next year in implementation and support.
Questions for Jay or Barbara? So your job is to tweak a little bit the governor's recommendations?
I don't, I, I don't think so.
I mean, I think someone actually alluded to some work that, you know, the divisions were to be doing during the speech, and I won't be doing it, so I can't take credit for that in any way.
I think Dr. Marionik. Yeah.
The team assembled that is for the extended comprehensive schools, of which there are 11. We're going to be moving this process forward. And in February, we're going to be visiting those schools. And the team will be spending two days in the schools, observing classrooms, instruction, and just having recommendations at the end of, here's what we saw, and here's what we think if you implemented would make a difference. So we're going to provide as much support as we can to the extended comprehensive schools.
Preview of coming.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Members from Iowa High School. Just a note to the board is that after this agenda item, we're going to move back and cover the rules we missed earlier. What we'll look at doing is just moving our work session until next month. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Hey, Dave. How are you?
Introductions, please.
Go ahead.
Dave Weber is principal at Dennison High School. I'm the chair member of the board for the Iowa High School Athletic Association.
Brian Hooky, I'm the attorney for the Athletic Association.
And Tom Keating, the executive director of the Athletic Association.
The floor is yours.
Well, you, you received our proposal back in December, and then thank you for, for the questions that, that you submitted. We, we tried our best to respond as best we could. So know that I, I don't want to rehash what you already got, what you already received. And I don't think there's a need for me to go through all of it again. And I, I think it would be best if you have questions, follow-up questions, or questions that would help clarify some things, we'd be happy to answer those for you.
One of the questions that I had that I didn't ask previously is that I do know that there are some school districts, two that I'm aware of, maybe more, that provide 100% of their students hot lunch, free hot lunch. How does that all factor in?
That's a great question, and we would rely on Jay to provide, because they still report, even though they may provide 100% lunch to all, or lunch to 100% of their students, they still file who is eligible for free and reduced lunch.
Can you give me a better idea of what the timeline is for, if there is a change, how the change needs to occur to develop your timelines?
You bet. We are on a two-year football scheduling cycle because that's the only sport that we schedule games in. And so we do our best, well, not our best, we guarantee that teams will- will. So we do a mirror schedule for two different years and just switch sites. The schedules, so the process is, we determine who is in what classification first, and then we determine who is in which geographic district. And those districts are broken up by geography, but also with some other considerations in terms of historical success. Once those districts are put together, then we start, then we ask schools for their non-district priorities. So who would they like to schedule in a non-district game? So example would be if Dave and I had, you know, Dave's at one school and I'm at another, we each submit five schools that we would like to play in those non-district games. We would like, if, for example, if we have four non-district games, these are the five people we would like you to choose from. If Dave and I both put each other down as one, number one, then we're guaranteed that we're going to play each other in that non-district game. So we get the priority list, and of course, as you can imagine, some of those priority lists, nobody matches anyone. So then we have to make some determination on who's going to play who. Once those opponents are determined, then we start laying out the calendar and look at who's going to play whom on what date. So it's a pretty lengthy process. Schools, we usually ask our Board of Control to approve the districts by our January meeting. We knew because of this process that we would need to delay that. There's been one other year during my tenure when we delayed that until the February meeting because our schools really need to know what their schedules are, as you can imagine, with high schools by March. They have senior nights, they have parent nights, they have homecoming, they want to schedule. So they want to know which games are we at home, which games are we not. So really, our deadline, if we were going to implement this in for the '23 and '24 schedule, we have to be able to go to our board at our February meeting with our districts.
So Tom, is this meant to, not sure how to say, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, to balance competition or to help some schools compete more, or is it more about equitable allocation? I mean, because I want to get my handle on that and then ask you, how does reducing a school's enrollment by 40% of their free and reduced lunches advance the ball, if you will, towards that goal?
Right.
I think a lot of people, I mean, you know, would like to know that.
You bet. And I think you're not the only one that asked that question. And I think our schools in general, even those schools who struggle competitively, ask the same question, how can this help us? How could it help us? And the answer is complex. Success in any athletic program, just as success probably in any educational piece, is complex. There's no one variable that determines that this will lead to success, and if it's not present, it will lead to failure. We know that there are things like coaching experience and coaching expertise. We know that there are factors such as a community's familiarity with the sport. Some communities have part of, you know, a significant part of their population that is not familiar with American football. We know that culture, tradition play into that, facilities play into that. Do we have a strength and conditioning coach at our school plays into that? So we know there are multiple factors, most of which fall upon the local school. The piece that we have some control over is who plays whom. And that's only because schools have asked us, since we went to district football, schools have asked us to schedule the games and to try to make it as balanced as possible. And we've always done that based on enrollment because we felt like schools that had similar number of students would probably be best suited to play those schools that are similar to them. So when we look at what do we have control over, and if we're going to schedule the games, folks have brought to us, you know, their data that says there's a correlation, an inverse correlation between the percentage of students on free and reduced lunch and winning percentage. And so there's evidence and there's a belief that socioeconomics plays a part. It is a variable when it comes to athletic success, just as it is a variable when it comes to academic success. We know that. So what can we do about that? Well, first, we have to be able to identify, be able to separate, if you will, schools by socioeconomic factor. The only one at our disposal is free and reduced lunch, which can be, schools can be compared on that. We can't compare them on their community's income level, you know, their median income. We don't have that data to support which parents in which school and what are their median incomes. Free and reduced lunch is the only economic factor that we have available to us. And so we look to states that used a free and reduced lunch model because our schools have been asking us to address socioeconomic piece. They have not asked us to address anything else. That's how we came up with this. Where the percentage comes from is participation. There are two things that we think are critical when it comes to athletic success, and we could argue that academic success falls in the same category, participation and resources. So how many athletes do we have available to us, and what kind of resources are we providing for them to compete? We don't have control over the resources. We don't have control over who has TV screens on their sidelines that they can look at during the game to review the plays that have already happened. We don't have any control over the number of coaches that somebody has on the sideline. We don't have control over their weight rooms, whether or not they have a strength and conditioning coach, and we can go on and on with that list. What we do have control over, to some degree, is who plays whom. And we are limited by what classification people are in. So in order to get folks closer to the number of athletes across the field from them, so when I walk out on the field and Team A has 73 players on their sideline, and let's say nine coaches, and on the other sideline, there are 26 players and three coaches, we can't do anything about the coaches. But what we can do with some factor is find ways to get teams to line up across the field with teams that have a similar number of participants. What the data tells us, and you saw that in the answer to a couple of the questions, is that schools that have a free and reduced lunch percentage above 50% get lower participation than in football in particular, than those students in schools who are below 50%. And when you first look at it, it looks like, well, it's only 7% difference. It's 13% versus 20. But when you look at that 13% of participation compared to the 20% participation, it's really 65% of what the schools below 50% are participating at. So that's where the Minnesota model comes in because they take that 40% of those students, lower the enrollment to that point with the intent of making up for the difference in participation. So if I'm in class 4A and I've been competing against schools that have maybe 20 or 30 more athletes than me, and then I go down a class, I may be participating against a more comparable number of participants than what I've been competing against, giving me a little bit of an opportunity. Again, it is only one variable. The number of participants is only one variable. There are lots. We've been asked by our member schools to do what we can with the variable that we have some control over that is scheduling.
Because obviously, you could go down a class, still, there'd be TV cameras. I mean, smaller schools that are really into football are going to.
Got it. Yep, absolutely.
It's just the, so the Minnesota experience, is that only a year old, or is it older than that?
I believe that's been, I think that's in their fourth year.
Okay. And has there been any study, or are there any metrics that say it tends to address the goal?
What they're finding is, the schools that have been winless are winning, they're not turning this around, right? And the reality, and let's kind of put it on the table, if the goal is for everybody in the state to be either 5-4 or 4-5, unrealistic goal. We know that's not going to happen. But when we see that there were 14 teams that didn't win a game in the past two years and that their, you know, that the average discrepancy in the score has been, you know, over 40 points, is there anything that can move that needle? And in Minnesota, what they're saying is, this did for those schools. It did not overwhelmingly change the face of football in their state, did not do that. But it did address those schools that were feeling as though there was no hope, that every time they'd go out on Friday night, there was no chance whatsoever of them to win. And again, if the goal is that on every Friday night, it's 50-50 in every stadium, unrealistic. There are other factors that are involved.
Could you clarify too, because I think in Minnesota, isn't Iowa the only state where you guys schedule the games?
We do.
So Minnesota, that would be different.
Correct.
You're already scheduling in the South anyway.
And in every other sport, and you saw that in one of my answers as well, in every other sport, teams get to play, this is a phrase we've heard a lot from our schools, let us play teams like us. And in every other sport, because teams either join a conference and have their games scheduled through the conference, or they schedule their own games independently, they get to choose their opponents. The difficulty with football is size and the physicality. In basketball, maybe I can play a freshman or two against your juniors and seniors. In football, it's, people are less likely to want to do that. Schools are less likely to want to put those young kids out against bigger, more mature, older kids. I think that's where a lot of this is coming from. So we're hearing safety is an issue. We don't have the metrics on that. We don't know how many injuries there are in the schools that, you know, based on their free and reduced lunch percentage. That's not available to us.
Could I ask you about travel time? The latest, this is Mike May from Spirit Lake, and I'm sorry that I'm not there with you, but I'm curious about travel times because the latest classification system, I see some huge travel times that kids are forced to make. Spencer, for instance, goes to Dennison last week, and they go to Mason City now. They go to Fort Dodge. I could go on and on. I mean, they're making huge trips. So have you looked at that and how that would impact schools?
Good question, Mike. And the answer is, the more classes we create, the fewer schools are in that class, the more travel there's going to be. It's inevitable. We can look at that in a variety of ways. We could look at South Dakota and look at the amount of travel they have because of the few number of schools they have. Or we could look at, you know, other states that separate out their metro areas from everybody else. But you are right, there is no way around that. As we move people from class to class, and as we add number of classes, we would increase travel. There's more travel in football than any other sport because there are more classes in football than there are in any other sport.
Do you see any effect that would have classifying this way? I'm largely in support of what you're doing, so I'm just curious.
Sure.
Have you looked at that issue if we do it this way?
If we, as long as we don't add more classes, I think we can manage the travel if we're simply moving schools from one class to another. But when we, now, 5A is a little bit different animal because 5A tends to be more metro-centered, and if we move teams out of 5A into 4A, they may have a little bit more travel than they're used to.
Does open enrollment have any, you know, we've been, that's changed a lot. I mean, I know there's rules about in the season, and I get that, but do you think that has an impact here?
I think open enrollment exasperates the problem because students who feel that they are capable will seek successful programs. If they're in a school that's not winning at all, and they have a competitive edge to them, they may seek a school that is competitive. And I think we see examples of that around the state. And that's not just in football, obviously, it's in every sport. But what that does is it saps more kids from those schools that struggle, making it even more difficult for them to succeed.
I'm assuming, made its wrong assumption, that you probably have run the numbers as far as if this was adopted, about how many schools would go up a class and how many schools would go down a class. Can you tell us about what those numbers would be?
Somewhere between 20 and 25 will go up, and 20 and 25 will go down.
Okay. Going down, just going down, one class or they're jumping up or down more than one class?
We have one school that we think could go down two classes. Everybody else, it would be one. And you guys know enough about statistics to know that we cannot make a formula severe enough to impact the schools in the middle of the classification. It'll be at the top and the bottom. Those are the ones that move.
The ones that move now.
They move, yeah.
Some are right at the bottom.
Right. There are, the top two or three are always a little volatile, and it can be the difference of one or two students. This would be more intentional and would move more than usually move up or down. So 20 to 25, and those include most of the schools that have really been struggling, not all of them certainly, but most.
Do you see a difference between moving up versus down? I mean, I, most of what I hear is, well, there's a school with a high percentage of free and reduced lunch would move down and it'd be more competitive, but somebody then has to go up, right? Am I right about that?
Correct.
And is there any analysis that maybe we're putting a school into a higher classification that shouldn't be there?
Correct. And when you, I think it was a good, the question was, are there any unintended consequences? And we have one school that has won one game in two years, and because of their free and reduced lunch percentage, and because of their current enrollment, which is close to the next class, they will get pushed up a class. They may go anyway, even if we didn't do this, but they most certainly would go if we do this.
And this will be on a two-year cycle then?
That's right.
Once everybody moves, it'll be two years before it's.
Correct. Yep. We'd have to, we would look at the data then and say, has this done anything to move the needle for those schools that have been struggling?
So would be if we approved this for two years. Would that bother you?
Does it bother them?
Do we see, I mean, do you develop some, decide if you really want this permanent, does it work or not? I know you'd have to.
Yeah, we've got to.
Forget the amendment part.
Correct. Yep. But I think.
For three years.
You know, this is what the member schools have asked. They, you know, I think there's, the unknown is, what impact is it going to have? You know, we've seen other states that have done similar. I was at the NFHS meeting last week and talked to executive directors in states who do this. They believe that their most challenged schools have been, have been helped, have been assisted by this. They, again, they say this has not had a major overhaul of football in their state, but it has helped those schools that have been in dire straits, so to speak, where they're not winning games and their margin of loss is significant. And, you know, this is all anecdotal, the number of injuries that they sustain because they've got to play younger kids. But I would say, Brian, that if this board were to approve what the member schools have asked for, I think the member schools then have to understand, we need to look at what the impact was. And the danger in doing anything like this is, well, how do you ever go back if you do this? How do you ever go back? If you do this, how do you ever go back? And the answer is, if this doesn't have the impact that we believe it will, we've got to look at a different variable. The reason that we didn't try three or four things that different states do is because we want to isolate. And that's the problem with the football schedule is, it's a year until you see the next schedule, and it's two years before we see the impact. And it's a little bit like turning around an aircraft carrier. It's not, no, it's just not fast data. And, you know, Dave's an administrator in a school, I'm an administrator, I was an administrator in a school, I was a principal. And anything that we implemented to try to help things academically, we didn't know what the impact was until probably two, three, maybe four years later. What does it look like? So the folks that want very fast results on this will be disappointed. They, we need time to study it. Just as, you know, I think it was a legitimate question, does it seem like this thing's going, you know, just happening like that? And the answer is no. We've been looking, I was on the Board of Control before I became the Executive Director. And back when I first got on the board, back in 2008, we were looking at classification. We interviewed Indiana that used the success model. We looked at different models. And in 2019, when I took over, that's when we started receiving communication from schools saying socioeconomics matters, please look at socioeconomics. And so we went out and started that conversation. Since 2019, our classification committee has met no less than two times every year. We've reviewed data. There were times where we thought, well, let's try something else. That's when we added the 5A class in football, and we went to a little bit more of a success model there. And that had some success. Folks wanted to know, why don't you just do that with all the other classes? And the answer goes back to Mike's question, which was, travel would be unreasonable if we do that in the other classes.
So knowing that this is what the members want, and I know that there was a vote, 80% yes, 20% no, and trying to understand the vote a little bit, do you know in that vote that there were members that just voted yes, because it doesn't impact them? And then of the members that may be impacted, 20 up or 25 up, 25 down? Have you spent time with those to really understand where their position is on this issue? How they feel about going up, how they feel about going down? Do we have any input opinion? I mean, I'd love to know from those schools where they're at.
You bet. And I think what I did early on is, for all of our administrators, I posted, if we did this at the beginning of this previous cycle, here's what it would have looked like. So here are the schools that would have gone up, here are the schools that would have gone down. And what I can tell you in general, not with, it was not 100%, but the schools that were going to move up voted nay, more often than not. The schools that were going down voted overwhelmingly yay. The other schools were, there was no real pattern. I broke it down by free and reduced lunch percentage in their school, and, you know, did what was the average free and reduced lunch of those who voted yay significantly higher than those who voted no? It wasn't. But when it came to those two things you're asking about, absolutely.
And then what about the 20% that never weighed in?
My, yeah, I could only speculate, and I don't know that I should do that. But I think, you know, we, first of all, whenever we put a vote out, to get 72% of our member schools to vote is, you know, we applaud it, because we don't get that very often.
Do you know, you said you could tell a school if they voted, you knew if they were going up or down, you could compare the vote. Of the schools that did not vote, were any of them on the list of ones that would have gone up or down? Are they the ones that were not impacted in the middle?
I would say that, I believe all schools who were either going to go up or down, all but one. And the one that didn't vote to, or that did not vote, would have gone down. However, the administrator there was the administrator for two different districts, and I believe that person felt their vote counted for both, when in fact it only counted for one. They needed to vote twice.
May I ask you a question?
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, just, I'm curious, and I'm very sympathetic to what you're trying to do. I mean, I really am. Could you tell me what the next variable would be that would be high on your priority list? And I understand, I'm going to take it, catching you off guard here, but what would be the next thing that you would say separates successful programs from ones that just aren't?
Well, Mike, I would tell you that we don't have control over the ones that I think are the priorities. Those would be coaching experience and expertise. And, you know, there are examples around the state for that.
Yeah, where do club sports come into that? I mean, we see so many kids who don't have the advantage of being able to pay some coach in the summertime $1,000 to travel with his team and play other people. I know this doesn't happen in football so much as basketball, volleyball, and other things, but that's one that concerns me as well. And I don't know that you've discussed that, if you haven't, I hope you will. But you understand what I'm saying.
I do, Mike, and I think you're right, and there's two pieces to that. Number one is resources, families need resources to be able to do that. The other is they need access. And schools that are closer to a metro area generally have more access to that kind of training than schools that are not close to a metro area. So if you've got the resources, and you've got the, and you have the location, your chances are greater of doing that. That's not to discount the fact that we have some families in our state that travel more than an hour to get to some of that training, because they can afford it, and they feel it's important. So it is a piece which goes back to economics. And again, the only indicator we have for economics is free and reduced lunch. That's the only one we can apply.
Yeah, well, thank you for your candor.
But there's no plans for volleyball, softball, baseball, basketball. But there's a lot of club sports.
Not yet. We want to see, and again, I'll go back to, we don't schedule those sports. So the regular season, they have complete control over who they're playing. And they don't have to depend on us.
So it wouldn't maybe come to you then?
It won't be grew out of schedule. Most likely not. You know, some who feel like their postseason matchups are a little out of whack, they may come to us and say, you know, can we do something about that? But generally, you're positioned for the postseason by what happens during the regular season. Who you have to play in the postseason is going to be determined by that.
Do you want to offer, oh, go ahead.
I just want to follow with comment that Brian was starting as far as maybe taking a smaller step forward. I was going through this, you know, I have some reservations, but I understand where you're at, and I certainly appreciate the survey of the member schools. And I think there's a legitimate concern. What I was thinking about in conjunction with what Ryan said is that, what would be wrong, or what would be, I'm trying to say, not worthy of considering approval for a four-year period of time with the report back after three years of how things are going? That gets you through the first three years to see how things are going, report back, and then at that time, extend it for whatever time or make modifications after a three-year period of time. Those are my thoughts. I obviously haven't shared them with the school board members here, but.
Sure. And I would defer to Thomas on that in regard to what, you know, in the process, you know, is that an option for the state board? Because we certainly, that isn't what we ask for. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't embrace that or consider that. But I would say, I don't think it's my place to say, sure, go ahead and lay that out, we'd be happy to do it. I think I would defer to what can the board do?
I'd also be interested in hearing counsel's thoughts, if he has any, but I think that the ability to provide approval of board, I laws and constitution would include the ability to monitor. And so I would, it's not what was asked for, but this is, this action item is within your sound discretion. So putting what you consider appropriate guardrails around that approval is within your sound discretion. Wouldn't want to speak for the association, they're ably represented by counsel. That's my initial, that lower response to the question, given that the ability to approve inherently includes some gradation.
Well.
The, you would, you would.
Hang on, Mike.
I'm sorry.
Hang on, Mike.
Sure.
I'm Brian, I'm Kim, the attorney for Athletic Association. Thank you. And I guess, I think that, looking at, you know, we're pretty careful about following the rules. You know, we have a 2018 agreement with the state of Iowa that allows us to perform the administrative duties that are assigned to us at the Department of Education. That's been in place since 1972. And our administrative code obviously requires, as you've seen, that our constitution be approved. We have been before this board, since I've been the attorney, at least two other times, because we were making changes to our constitution. Some of them were not substantive. This is, I think it's a different way of bringing it forward. However, the association is, was delegated these administrative duties. The board has passed this, what we brought to you, and our membership has approved it. Now, I think it would be foolish to think that the Athletic Association does not care what the State Boards of Education says, because they do, they understand their job. And they have asked you with respect to approve what they have, what the board has unanimously approved, and what our members have approved. I think to change it, to put a restriction on it, would require perhaps us to go back and do it and start over again with this process. We understand, or I should say, I know Tom understands and David, that monitoring, I mean, this move, if you'll see in the materials, has been a major effort since 2018, 2019 for studying. We have looked at every state in the United States, what they do. There are models which we have put forward in here, which have been rejected by our board. They refuse to pit private schools against public schools. We're not doing it. They have not done, and they have come to this as their best, and I think the best chance for success with the least intrusive consequences. And our members, I think, think that, and I can certainly understand those who voted no, because they don't want to go up. I believe our laws, also, bylaws also required if a school doesn't want to go down, they can stay up. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I just, and it's more of a point, I should be quiet, but the more of a point of order is, in this case, I would ask you to let, to pass this with the understanding that they hear what you're saying. I mean, we report to the State Department of Education. And we have no, I don't think they have a desire to approve anything that's not going to have a positive effect on students, on participation. These are your average students, this isn't about the best, and these are about the kids of our state who just want a chance to participate on a team that has a chance. And I guess I'm asking you to trust them by approving this as it's stated. And I certainly understand the reservations of the members, I respect that. You know, who wants to prove something that doesn't work? And we're going to be under, we are, we have already been under a microscope, but we are going to continue to be under a microscope on what are you doing for kids, and is this working? We have no desire to have an unintended consequence to a school that it didn't do any good for anybody, or for a very limited purpose. We don't want to do that. That's not why they're here. They're here because they think this model will have an impact on kids who need an impact. And I would ask you, I just think for us to go back again, if we're going to change up, because we're changing our articles, you know, if there's a restriction to it, we're going to have to put that in there. And I'm, you know, I, you know, we're at your, this is your job under the administrative rules, and I respect that. But I think I would ask you again to trust Athletic Association with this attempt to provide it, with the understanding that if it's not doing any good, they're going to change it. We changed lots of things that don't work, and we try to make them work for everybody. And I understand your concern that, are we, were we just approving something, and you're not going to have any control over it? Well, the State Board of Education has a lot of control over what we do. So I'll be quiet, but thank you so much, appreciate it.
I would say this isn't about trust. We want to defer to you, you're the experts at this. We're known for deferring to local school districts and organizations like yours. It's more of a, we're getting into the unknown a bit. We have some anecdotal information, and we have some correlations, not necessarily cause and effect. So, you know, I, I mean, I know you, I would, you know, none of you are going to do anything that hurts high school athletics, and particular football in this. And you have the same interest we do. On the other hand, we have to look out over the whole state from a little different perspective than you, and make sure that if we have this obligation to approve, that we exercise it properly. That's all. So I think we all want participation in high school athletics and every other extracurricular activity, and we want excellent education programs. That's why we're all here. It's just a question of, you know, should it be forever until you bring it back? Or, and then it kind of leads me back to my initial question. How are we going to be able, how are you going to be able to measure if this worked or not? I mean, that's probably my number one question, because I believe you when you say, well, this won't work. If this doesn't work, we'll come back and change it. I, how are you going to know that? How are we going to know? Because the state football champion's not the same team every year? Or because places that lose 50 games in a row, all of a sudden now win three a year? I mean, I don't know the answer to that.
Right.
So, I mean, I want to be deferential, I support what your organization does, and it's not about me trusting, I mean, trusting you and the association and the schools. And I hope you don't think, I hope you feel you can trust this body too.
Absolutely. And I would emphasize that this came from our member schools. We did not take it to them, they brought it to us. They have been insistent since I became the Executive Director, and even before that. But certainly since I became the Executive Director, this has been communication from schools in terms of an issue or a challenge. This has been the challenge that we have been faced with. And because our member schools wanted us to look at this and try to figure something out for them, we've done that. We felt like we owed it to them to do the research that needed to be done, have the conversations that needed to be had. I met with the urban network superintendents when I first got on to listen to their struggles regarding football in their schools. I've had meetings with conferences. We convened a classification committee that, quite frankly, has been sort of just looking at how many schools are in each class. And now they're deep into this work. So I think back to your question, Brian, about how will we know? The answer is, I need, I will look at the same data I looked at before we step on the gas for this. gas for this. How many schools do we have that are not winning a game? What are the margins of, of, of loss? And, you know, how widespread is it? We, we had 44 schools in the past two years that had two or fewer wins. Well, what number will that be after two years of this model? If the answer is 44, then obviously it hasn't done what it's, it, it was intended to do, and we have to go back to the drawing board. We have to figure something else out. If it does have an impact, just as, as, and I believe that, not in my tenure, but I know our executive directors in the past have been asked to come to the board and provide a report. And sometimes it's a state of your association, and, uh, you know, it, it could certainly be, please come back and report on this after the, the first two years of the cycle, so that we know what the impact was. We'd be happy to do that.
That, that would be my recommendation, that you come back. I assume that you will adjust this every two years when you're doing your football cycle. Is that right?
That's right.
Is that how it would be done? You, you would look at these numbers after two years, and they may change.
That's correct.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. I would move the, the question that's on the table, and that is this plan by the Boys' Association to change the way football is measured. Uh, if I didn't state that correctly, I want to, I want to be sure that, that I moved it correctly, but move the motion on the table.
Well, let's see what that motion says, Mike. Hang on a second.
It's just to approve, it's just to approve the new articles, right?
It is.
Correct. That's all we need to do.
The plan. Okay, that's, that's what I'm moving.
So if you'll move, if your motion is, I move to approve of the proposed change of the Articles of Incorporation of the Iowa High School Athletic Association, I'll second that.
That's my motion. Thank you, Brian. I don't have it in front of me. I apologize.
Okay, we're just happy you're with us today.
Yeah.
That was the move.
I bet you are.
It's the move and second. Other discussion?
I'd like to have just a little bit more discussion. I don't know that I was quite ready yet for a motion. I feel like we have a little bit more time, knowing that your, it needs to go in front of your board in February. Knowing that we have at least a month between January 15th and February 15th, I think I'd like to understand the data a little bit better and dig into a little bit more, understand the schools' perspectives a little bit deeper, give a little bit more time to work in this, see if there is a little bit more of a compromise in a way that we could understand the socioeconomic factors. I know that you all have worked in this a significant amount of time, but this is the first time it's been in front of the board. So I want to make sure as we make this decision, that we are fully informed as we make this change for this sport across the state of Iowa, and setting this, setting this for other, for other sports potentially, and how it, how it could impact others, and where this could go. And I clearly understand the disadvantages as a, as an Iowa athlete. I understand that. But to Brian's earlier point, I think there are other implications that we need to think about here, perceptions that could be had, and I just want to make sure that we do our due diligence in this coming to the board today. I also recognize that we have two members here that aren't able to weigh in, and I feel like this is a big enough decision, and knowing that this is the first time it's come before the board, that knowing, knowing where those two board members are at as well is really important. So if we can, my, my consideration for the board would be is, if we can have one more opportunity to discuss this without delaying the decision in fairness to the high school association, I, I think that would be good due diligence for the board.
And I would have to, I would have to be, go ahead.
A piece of new information you wouldn't have had before. So originally, our next regularly scheduled meeting would have been in March, but because of a decision today, we will have a meeting in February. We will have a meeting within 30 days from today. That's the meeting she's referring to.
And what I, earlier, what I explained is that our staff has to present our, our board in February with classifications. So they, that work would have to be done before February. We, we, we can't do that work in, in, in a matter of days. I would be putting our football administrators in a, in a very difficult position to try to get that done by February, if, if this is not acted upon today. If, if it failed today, they would go with the plan they've always gone with. If it is approved today, they would collect the numbers, create the classifications, and then present those to our board in February, so that they could have the schedules ready in March.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So I haven't ever played football, mostly because I'm not a boy, but I have played every other sport available to me, and I'm no stranger to driving three hours knowing I'm going to lose and hating every single day. I still do the three-hour ride, I still commit, I play, and I come back three hours to lose. And it, it sucks, and I am, I support what you're doing and trying to level it out. You'll never have people that are satisfied with where they're at. Like, if they're going up, they're not going to be happy, because they're going to lose, or they're not going to lose as much, or they're not going to win as much as they had in the lower class, and they're, they're going down, they're going to be happy because they have a chance to win more. But, oh yeah, my question. So my question was, what if this works and different sports want to implement it? Would you help them in trying to figure out their data, because they are probably gathering different data? Would you help them gather that data and push them along to that same route that worked for you, whether it be this or a different system?
If, if our member schools ask us to look at other sports, we, we will, we will do that. That's how this got started, and, and we would be more than willing to work with any sport that, that we felt we needed to address. And again, it goes back to, I think, the reason football was such a, a, a major piece of this is because we schedule it, and they don't have a chance to say who they play.
Does any consideration given to them scheduling their own games like the other sports?
Like every other sport in every other state.
Yep. That we are the only, we and Nebraska are the only two states that schedule football. No one else does. And the answer is, if I'm going to be completely honest with you, the, the most likely way to, for schools to play teams like them is if they scheduled their own games. And again, in my responses, I think you saw that, the border schools struggle a little bit, because they, they only have three directions to go to find opponents, not four. And the most successful programs struggle to get games, because teams don't want to play them. It might be easy to say, well, too bad, except if we have a team that's got a four-game football schedule, they're going to come to us and say, you need to help us find games. That's where this all came from. It is those successful programs struggled trying to find games, and they came to us, we went with a district model.
The evolution is that it used to be kind of conference football, and I'm not sure when district football started. It's been a while.
It was different times, wasn't it?
Yeah.
But then, then after district football, the states scheduled district games, but then school districts were left to schedule their own non-district games, and that was crazy.
Correct.
You remember.
As soon as those things came out, the pairings, even in advanced people trying to jockey for positions to keep district football, which was attempted, I should say, normalize the competition between a number of kids in a class, that's where district football came about.
And, and to go back to the original question, I, I would say, I appreciate the, the desire to have more time to deliberate. I, I absolutely do. I think if the board is going to do that, we're prob, we're looking at 2025 before implementation. We would have to do another cycle of the, the model we've used previously, and then, and then consider doing it in '25.
I don't, I don't...
Go ahead, Mike.
It's okay. Yeah, I, I don't want to cut off debate and consideration of this, but it has been out there for some time. This is not just thrown at us today. I think we've known about this for some time, and appreciate the comments that has been done. I see you guys as sort of a super board of education, too, in terms of handing our athletics in the state. We give deference to school boards and the decisions that we make, and I think we give deference to you as well, because you are a super board dealing with athletics in the state, and I appreciate what you do. With that, I'd like to move the question.
I'm going to ask if there's any other comments.
The only other comment I would have is, and coming from a, a district where, you know, sometimes it really boils down to interest, you know, maybe not so much socioeconomic, as Dave can well speak, because we're from the same district.
Right.
You know, our, our student, our, our students' bodies and our families and our, you know, the makeup of our community is, is, I don't want to say unique for Western Iowa, but it's certainly different. There are, there are other pockets that are kind of like us, you know, very, very blue-collar. And we just don't seem to have, if you will, the interest in some sports that even smaller districts have a better interest than, than what we might have. And I don't know how changing it to free and reduce lunch does anything for those types of districts. And I'm just using ours as an example, because it's the one I'm the most familiar with. But I, I don't see any impact whatsoever statewide. You might have a, you, you used an analogy, well, if we had started at 44 and we ended 44, you know, then it didn't work. Well, then what's the win? Is it 24? Is it 10? Is it 43? I mean, what's the win versus, versus the loss? And I don't know that there is a loss. Is it really going to do, is it really going to help anybody? And I know that's a hard thing to quantify, and, but I just don't know how changing it makes a difference.
I think if we had a little more time to dig in and spend some time with, with everyone to understand and make sure that we...
And I was, that was the last thing I was going to end with, Cassandra, was how long have you guys, and you, Mike, you might have known about this for a long time. I didn't. But maybe it has been out there for a long, long time, and I just was ignoring it. But really, I, I've known it for, about it for a short period of time. How long have you guys been looking at it?
Probably since, well, before 2010, when I got on the board in 2008, we've been looking at different ways to classify.
Okay.
This, this specific model, we've, we've run models since 2019, where we, we looked at, what, what would Iowa look like if we implemented these various models? We found that, for example, the success model that is used in, in Indiana would have moved four schools up and four schools down. So that, that model was going to have very little impact, and we put that aside quickly.
Success models based on your, like, for football, it'd be like a teacher average. So if you were like 14-0, you may move up when you're... But the problem with that is those, that those two classes are now gone.
Right.
And now you're working with a whole different group of kids. It's just a lot of variables.
Right.
I've been on the board four years, and it's been a discussion every year, not publicly, where it's come to a year since, but our, our members have been asking for four years to try to help. Our kids give them a chance, I guess.
And I've only been on the school board, the state school board, for a little over a year, so has it ever been roached with the state board?
No, you're right. We, we've never gotten to the point where we asked, where the members have asked us to...
Get there.
Get there. And the classification committee this year felt like it's, it's, it's time to implement something.
Right.
To try to, and so what is that best-case scenario of something in this?
Right. And I'm not saying there's anything nefarious in the schedule of events, but there are those who think, well, boy, they waited right till the 12th hour.
Yep.
And, and, you know...
Right.
Yeah. At the 12th hour, they come and say, we need a decision, we needed it yesterday. So I'm, I'm kind of with Cassandra. I mean, I'm, I'm new to the game. I don't know that I know all the ins and outs. I don't know that I've been convinced, really, one way or the other. And I understand that to postpone it would do what? It would just leave things the way they are for another two-year cycle, correct?
Yep.
So there, no harm, no foul. It would just leave things the way they've been for how many years? How many years has this been?
Two years. And football re, does districts...
Every two years.
Every two.
But I mean, having, do, do we see a lot of movement in districts every two years?
No.
Do we see any movement?
Well, in districts, yes, in classification.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant classifications. Do we see much movement?
It's the top, so just the top four, if you're the top of 4A or the bottom of 4A, it's like six schools, maybe you need to ask, they may bounce up and down.
Bounce up and down.
Because they change five to 10 students.
Okay.
If you're in the middle to the top, you're, you're probably not getting change.
Okay. It's not going to be any...
Borderline school.
Borderlines, okay. All right.
Same way with 2A and 3A.
Yep, 2A, 3A, 1A, yep, for every class.
Well, I would, I will make my plea one more time. If this is, if we can have 30 days to work on this together collaboratively, between hearing this today, working with the full board, being able to spend some, more time with this information, and I know it puts your team in a bind, but if this is really important to the association, and really wanting to make this change, and us really wanting to support Iowa athletes, student athletes, and making a change, it seems like putting this time in over the 30 days to make sure that we are confident and in the right place and making this decision would be worth it to make the positive change for the next two years, rather than just saying the next two years is completely off the table.
Yep. Cassandra, I, I appreciate that, and I mean, thank you. What, what that will do is require our staff to put, to do two preparations. So the amount of time that it takes to do those classifications is pretty significant, and then to do it for both scenarios is going to be, is going to, is going to add to it. So I don't know how we would get ready to schedule for the '23, '24. And, and I don't say that to push, you're the state board. You, you, you have to make this decision in a way that you feel confident. I, I'm just sharing the reality of the, of the, of the schedule for us.
I was going to suggest the same thing, it would be possible to do two scenarios, but I understand the amount of work that they would put on staff.
Well, I think we've had fallen fair discussion. I think Mike did move the question, so Mr. Chair, I would second, second his motion.
Did you have an ultime?
I mean, Cassandra...
Need a vote on the motion.
Cassandra can move to table this, if, if you want. That's the remedy for taking more time.
I can move to table in the middle of a motion?
Well, that's the only thing I think that trumps the motion for a question, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's up to you. You're the...
Well, I, I think we have a question on, we'll see where this goes.
Yeah.
The vote.
Can we do it in like two weeks or something? I mean, I think that we can probably, I mean, if you want to people, I mean, maybe if we could work out a better timeline that works better for them or something like that. Does it have to be a month?
I feel like my questions were forthrightly responded to today, and while I will honestly say I don't know that this is perfect, I would say these three gentlemen don't think this is perfect either. But, you know, I also, I, I don't know that I want to, I mean, there's a lot of people that voted for this, and a lot of work has gone into them, whether we knew it or not, and our role is to approve or not this. So...
I'm not, I'm going to learn between now and...
I'm not, I don't think I'm going to learn a thing, to be honest.
Let's do a roll call vote, please.
On...
On...
On your motion.
Who's motion?
On Mike's.
Mike's motion. That I seconded you.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Axiotis?
Aye.
Bradley?
Aye.
Pauls?
It's a difficult decision. Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Robbins?
Aye.
I'm assuming that's 6-0.
6-0, sorry.
Aye.
I'm assuming that's 6-0.
6-0, sorry.
All right, motions approved.
Mr. Chair, could I make another motion, please?
Sure.
I would like to move that Mr. Keating or his designee, or the president or his designee, come back to the State Board of Education after this next cycle, whether that's, I don't even know when to say, it's before three years from now, so after the two seasons. And be prepared to discuss with us your view on how this has gone and provide some analysis like you have already, and maybe something else that you learned.
I would second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, or an update after year two, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Gary, thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you, Brad.
Thank you.
See you. Rest for last today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's funny, you know, Pat Thomas.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate your questions.
Thanks, Thomas. Appreciate it.
Those are not a good thing at 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
Which is the trick here?
We have a special time for you.
Put that one over or something? Got a lot of cheers now.
Okay, Thomas, I think we're ready.
Okay, we're going to finish up the 10 o'clock agenda item. Thank you for your patience, both with the many difficult things that you had on your agenda. And thank you for allowing me to take some time to meet with my job alikes from other state agencies. Hopefully at a coming meeting, I'll be able to brief you on what that means for your work, the volume of work that will be coming before you regarding rulemaking. So the first is Chapter 14. There were three bills last session that made some changes that were of, that required rulemaking. The first would allow schools to stock bronchodilator medication, canisters, spacers for students, staff members, visitors who might have some respiratory distress. This is in addition to the ability to stock EpiPens. The second would be a bill to allow physician assistants to do more things in schools. There were a couple of things that the physician assistant lobby identified as work that perhaps they could do alongside school nurses, alongside other folks regarding providing medication training. And then the third adds an additional stock medication to bronchodilators and EpiPens, and that is opioid antagonist medication. So a school could receive a prescription for, the brand name is Narcan, in case of an emergency. So those are the three rules currently, three statutes currently before you. There was an additional statute that was in the rules as additionally posted regarding consent to student health screenings. I was asked on behalf of the department to tap the brakes on that in case there might be some legislative changes. We've been in the circumstances before where I presented you rules on a bill that had been just recently repealed. So since that topic, there might be some legislative correction to the underlying bill this coming session. We would have clarity in March about whether or not that portion of the rules would move forward. So if I may answer any questions about bronchodilators, physician assistants, or opioid antagonists, please let me know. Notice of intended, notice of intended act.
All right. I think IASB has already put out modified more policies on this. Okay. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Chapter 64 and 67, I have been joined by Kim Veladi and Lee Stegman to answer any questions that I can't. This rulemaking comes out of a review of these two rule chapters as part of the periodic rules review cycle. The content area experts identified some areas where grantees could receive more flexibility in use of funds, rolling over funds rather than reverting them to the department. The amount that would be reverted in most years is low four figures at most. So it was more of an accounting nightmare to actually take less than a, less than a couple thousand dollars back and redistribute it, rather than it was more, it was statutorily permissible and allowable to allow the grantees to roll those funds over into coming years. In addition, there are some revisions regarding person first language, updating former sort of antique or out of favor references to certain disabilities, certain conditions. And then there has always been some questions about what does the child development coordinating council do? What does the department do? And this rulemaking sorts out when it is by statute, the council's authority, when it is by statute, the department's authority, and when is it joint work. And so compliment to the content area experts about bringing these rules to you. They more align closely with the code and provide some flexibility to grantees under both chapters. With that, I'm open to answering any easy questions. My colleagues will answer all the hard ones.
This is just to give notice.
Again, just to give notice.
So then we'll receive a public hearing, feedback back.
Yes, there will, this particular rule, there was no interest expressed under Executive Order 10. Rulemakings that start after February 1st will be required to have public hearings. This rulemaking, because of the feedback that was received during the drafting process, the content area experts and I decided no public hearings necessary, public comment, a period of written public comment would be sufficient.
Okay. Any questions?
And am I correct that the CDCC is on board with these rule changes? Okay. So similar to the Community College Council reviewing rules that come through their lane, the CDCC has reviewed these proposed changes.
Is there a motion to approve to give notice?
Simone.
Moved by Brooke, is her second.
Second.
Cassandra and Mike. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Any updates you want to give us about rules and stuff?
I'm going to work with staff and with board membership about doing a comprehensive discuss. By your March meeting, we should have some timelines about what each state agency would have. Every rule will be reviewed whether or not it continues to be suitable. The default rule is any randomly selected rule should be repealed. And so there will need to be a business case for every rule going forward, that it improves health and safety of Iowans, that it improves the economy, that it improves like quality of life issues, that it protects from external harms, that it meets the mission, the statutory mission of the rulemaking agency. I will have more update for this board's schedule, as well as at the March meeting, including sort of what it means to be a, under a moratorium, and the exceptions to a rulemaking moratorium. So for example, if the legislature directs rulemaking, it's a statutory command that will move forward, notwithstanding the moratorium. But just general run-of-the-mill rulemaking, it's on pause until that particular rulemaking has been demonstrated to be necessary for one of the many reasons. So that necessary for public health, necessary to.
So how do these two rules fit into that?
Since they're in process, they're not subject to it. So.
But say, if they were not in process.
If they were not in process, first of all, I think, just new information to me as of noon, or as of 11 o'clock. The Narcan rule, health and safety. Bronchodilators, health and safety. Physician assistance, it actually expands employment opportunities for physician assistants and expands school choice, not school, expands administrator choice on how to staff those positions. So under the standards of Executive Order 10, if this were a brand-new rulemaking in March, because of the combination of statutory commands, human health and safety, I would imagine that I would have clearance to present it to you. Similar.
That's from who?
The administrative rules coordinator at the governor's office. Since we are an executive branch agency, and this is, this is, since the department which makes recommendations is an executive branch agency, these rules have been before the rules coordinator at the governor's office, before they even come to you.
Okay.
Similar with the rule on shared visions, CDCC, since it improves flexibility, it sort of does a better job of drawing out which state agency or which state border commission has responsibility for it. It better describes constraints on government action and constraints and which, who has what duty and when. That would be another exception to the moratorium where a rule cleans up government. So as March 1st and going forward, as a rule comes to you, as part of that, myself or whoever presents the rules to you will explain how it fits in Executive Order 10, where it fits, what homework the department has done to prep that rule to come before you for consideration, stakeholder input, a more robust pre-rulemaking regulatory analysis, including public hearings about future rulemakings. When a rule comes before you as part of the preamble, I anticipate stating to you how it fits into new all-state agency requirements for rulemaking.
How many rules are there, Thomas, for the D?
A lot.
Come on, Thomas.
Well, we've got, let's just put it this, by way of comparison to the book that I brought to show and tell this morning. In 1958, special education was a column and a third of a page. Now, special education is a binder. And so that just sort of example, you know, we have done some examples of getting rid of entire rule chapters or entire rules that don't, you know, we have started the work as a department and you as a board that Executive Order 10 is a lot, a five-inch-thick binder if I were to print them out.
All right. We're at that hour of, we're ahead of schedule.
So funny.
So again, I'm at your disposal, anticipate maybe needing to, at least as the Executive Order 10 gets baked into the process, spending more time explaining the authority or the ability to consider proposed and final rules. And more so than would have, than I would have presented in the past, they usually would have just skipped into the content. Myself and the content area experts are going to have to do, like, show our work. How are we even properly before you to recommend rules?
Okay.
I have a question on the rules. So once we approve rules, does it go to the ARRC then?
Yes.
Okay. So we're a step before that process. Most agencies, like when we have rules, we just go straight to ARRC. You don't have to go through anything. But you guys have to come for certain rules or?
Notice of intended action will go before ARC, Administrative Rules Review Committee. Final agency action, so adopted and filed, will also go before ARC. So each of our rules go before ARC twice.
Okay.
Which if you are ever bored in the Capitol and want to just watch, like, four hours of boredom interspersed with 15 seconds of sheer terror, come to ARC.
Let's talk about the February meeting here real quick. So we have the contract to approve for the charter school. Are there other items for February that we should be?
I think there was one other.
There is one other charter school monitoring update.
For choice. Is that just for choice or for both? For both?
I don't know. I just started to add to the February agenda.
The question I have is, do we have enough business to have an in-person meeting or should it be?
Didn't you say the quorum has to be based on?
So there's, if a majority of a quorum is remote, there, now that we're not operating under executive orders, public health emergencies, if a majority of a quorum is remote, the board has to make a specific finding in the minutes that an in-person meeting was impractical or impossible. And so maybe if the board is coming together only for an hour, given your busy schedules, but that is a required finding, yeah, the majority of the quorum is remote.
We did that once.
For choice, for the last February's charter.
Yeah.
Because, because you are a volunteer board.
It was, it was by phone, was it?
It was, it was either.
That was a singular agenda item, adding something else that potentially takes longer. So maybe we don't add that in February, you save it for March, or do you want to hear it in February?
I don't think February's magic is having that. So.
Just meshing the two agenda items together, there may be things that come out of the meeting regarding the contract that would inform the questions that you want to ask to incumbent charter schools. So maybe as order of operations, it's not necessary to have that in February, just because now I've got a third thing to compare those two to. It certainly would make, there's no requirement that it happened in February, unless it's the.
Unless there's something else that comes up that we need to meet in person, then I would think that a meeting by Zoom or remotely would be appropriate for February. But if something changes, I guess, keep the calendar clear and stay tuned.
Might I ask the board's leave to place a couple of very non-controversial rules that received no public comment on the consent agenda? So in February, to save agenda space, board packet space for the March meeting. So these are rules that were noticed in November. There's been no, there will be identical to notice of intended action. Place it right after approving your agenda. So if that's something that you would allow me to do, I greatly appreciate it.
I have no problem with that.
All right, I'll plan on this. Thank you.
What else do you guys want to talk about today?
My goodness.
I have an option to adjourn.
Simone.
Your second?
Second.
In favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Thanks, Mike. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, honey.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.